I now declare this meeting of the Galt City Council duly open for the transaction of business. Liz, would you please conduct the roll call?
Councilor Haynes?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Reboi?
Here.
Meredith?
Here. This time I'm going to turn the microphone over to our city attorney to disclose any reportable items out of closed session.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. There's quite a list on our closed session agenda this evening. Council convened for conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Consumans Community Services District versus City, and Galt Redevelopment Agency. There's no reportable action under that item. Under D1, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, three cases, there's no reportable action under any of those three cases. Under item D2, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, the council has not concluded that particular matter and is going back into closed session at the end of the public session. Under liability claims, claim of Roberts, Brunel, and Witt, there's no reportable action under that item. Conference with real property negotiator regarding APN 150 0221 008, there is no, this action was not taken up by the council as yet and will be taken up after the open session. The last item, conference with real property negotiator regarding Evans et al., there's no reportable action on that item as well.
Thank you. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, please stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda approval additions and/or deletions? Anyone like to pull anything off of the consent calendar?
D6.
D6. Greg, did you want to pull item D8 off the consent calendar?
Yes, we need to pull item D7, and that's just a substitute resolution. I provided copies of the revised resolution to all council members.
Is that the only recommendation from staff? Okay. Public comment?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt City limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Rodney Stanhope?
Rodney?
Rodney?
What's happening?
Okay, I'll come back, I'll come back to him. Amanda?
There he is, right there. Mr. Stanhope? You're up.
How you guys doing tonight?
Pretty good.
Sorry for my appearance, I just drove 17 hours from Washington to get here.
At least you have a National Guard hat on, that's a good thing.
Yeah. My name is Rodney Stanhope, I live in Galt, I own a business in Galt, but apparently that doesn't matter. I didn't qualify for the mandated durations, so I have no voice. Mr. Claire, I have a question for you. If a business owner opened a business in Galt today, would he be able to come to you, give him his, give him, get his opinion, listen to his opinion, and give it value?
Sure.
Ms. Payne, if a person moved to the city today and became a citizen of Galt, would you listen to them?
Absolutely.
You guys, for the ones of you wondering why all that information matters, I spoke here two weeks ago as a vendor in regards to the proposed changes to the flea market. After giving my opinion about the changes, I was informed that we vendors are impossible to deal with. Then I was questioned about how long I've been a vendor. My answer, 1992. I used to work for someone else, I didn't grow up owning my own business. I then find out that Mr. Haynes spent city time and manpower to investigate my claims and took it upon himself to inform the entire council so he could discredit me. And it's, my problem is, you don't seem to care how long I've lived here or how long I've been in business. You only care to discredit, retaliate against, demean, and intimidate any and all who dare oppose you. I'm speaking directly to you, sir. My crime is simple. I stand with the citizens of Galt, some of which are tired of the lies and intimidation tactics. They are people too and deserve to be heard. Fear, repression, and retribution is not how you maintain balance. That is why I put my name in the hat for City Council, and that is why I agree that your removal from office is the only hope the city has. I will not stand idly by while you destroy the future of our city. You leave me no choice but formally and openly endorse your recall. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Stanhope, before you step away, though, you indicated that I investigated, looked into. Let me tell you what happens when we get people up here sometimes, all too often making claims about, you know, their experience, and you came across as if you were the number one vendor out there, as if you represented everybody. But the fact and the reality is, we went back, we checked, I had it checked, and you're right, I did, to 2002, there's no record of you. In fact, the first record of you actually coming as a vendor through our market is March 28th of this year, 2008.
When I started my own company.
Yes, and the address you gave us was a Sacramento address.
At the time.
Okay, so, yeah, okay, at that time. So, how long have you really been a resident of Galt?
I moved here in February, but I hadn't changed my address yet.
So you've been a resident of Galt for what, about four months? Five, six months, maybe?
About five, six months, yeah.
How long you been coming to our council meetings?
Mr. Claire, didn't I speak here in 2003? I used to work for Manufactured Home Systems when you guys were gonna do the last tax increase.
Correct?
Yes.
Well, that was 2003, but recently is what I'm talking about. Okay, you know, you make a lot of claims, but the problem is, when, when somebody goes to look at the claims that you're making, there's, there's no facts behind it.
Well.
The problem is, your credibility isn't all that strong, to be frankly honest with you.
Well, I have news for you. The definition of a vendor at the Galt Flea Market is somebody who paid for and worked their own booth at least once. That gives them the validity and the value as a vendor at the Galt Flea Market. What I offered you was to work with other vendors who were in attendance that night, and we all agreed, if you want a coalition of vendors from the flea market to give you our opinion on how to fix the flea market, let us do it. Your answer was that you can't get a definitive answer from any of us, because none of us agree, and that's not true.
Well, that in itself is a separate issue.
Mm-hmm.
I was just addressing your credibility, because all too often you come up here and make claims that aren't actual, factual. So, you know, from this point on...
Well, my credibility is, the Galt Flea Market unfortunately doesn't pay all of my bills.
I'm not questioning the Galt Flea Market, I'm questioning your credibility, sir. Because when you say something, at least be factual, because people out there listening, you may come across as if you're a long-term Galt resident, having done business here for some years.
Never claimed a D1.
Yes, you do, but I just want to point that out to you. Thank you for your time.
Never claimed a D1 all my life.
Amanda?
We appreciate your six months.
Hi, thank you for entertaining me. My name is Amanda Brunello, and I'm a resident of 551 and 1/2 G Street, the issue that you had your private meeting tonight, post-meeting about. And I'm hearing already, I've heard a great wealth of information regarding what's important to you, credibility, hearing both sides of the story, what really happened, and who's liable for the situation there. All I can tell you is that when I got up on August 9th, I'd already placed two calls to the Public Works Department. We were considered the last key on the last lock of the sewage line of the old sewer pipes on G Street. Public Works told us over two years ago, if you ever have problems with your toilet, call us, because you're the one we need to hear from. So we've always done that. Every 60 days or so, we've been known to call them, and they come out, and they flush the lines, and everybody in town is happy, and nobody knows that it was a phone call, really, from G Street, that took, you know, them being alerted. The day before the spill on August 9th, at our house, I called twice. The second call went through police dispatch, because it was after hours, and I was almost embarrassed to say, "I'm sorry to be calling the emergency number, because my toilet won't flush." But that's what they requested we do. They didn't come out that night, the next morning they did. Within five minutes, there was a stench that you could not imagine in your life. 15 minutes later was when we finally, our neighbor came by and she asked us if we were aware that we were having a sewage spill. It was the stuff that Stephen King can't even describe what it was like, the ceiling in our bathroom. And it wasn't just water or black water, it was the stuff that nightmares are made of. Working in retail and sales and all types of other positions in my life, they always told us, "Never say you're sorry." Because soon as somebody hears you say, "I'm real sorry," whether it be, "I'm sorry for your loss," or "I'm sorry this happened to you," you, they accept responsibility. But the words I heard, "I'm so sorry this happened," 12 times that day, from the different public utilities workers that came out to our home, to go through our home, to take pictures of our home and all of our possessions that were covered in human feces. They were just, I mean, it was unbelievable. They made it very clear to us, it was not our fault, we were not liable. Within two hours, we were displaced, homeless, we can't, we can't go back there. Even now, when we go down that alley, the stench is still so bad that I can't imagine laying my head down there, or, you know, having my neighbor's brand-new baby come over for me to babysit in that same apartment. Since then, there have been a lot of, you know, discrepancies between us and your insurance company and your insurance adjusters regarding what, what is ours. I have no use for litigation with the City Council of Galt. I've only lived here for four years, and I love this town. I think it's a wonderful town, I haven't met a single mean person. I've enjoyed even watching your council sessions on Channel 6, just because you guys are entertaining. But truthfully, standing here in front of you right now, I can tell you that I'm staying at the Royal Delta Inn with my dog, my cat, my tropical fish, and my roommate in one room. We've been there for two months, and we made a decision based on health reasons that we cannot go back to that apartment, no matter what. And we're just hoping to be able to get some answers from somebody who will tell us the straight scoop, okay, what's really going on. When we've tried to come in and find out, you know, what, when this will be over, who you needed to come out and test the house for contamination, or what you required from us, we haven't been able to get any answers from anybody, because there's an insurance adjuster and a possible question of liability on, on this situation. We really don't care, the people who live there, we all want to go home, someplace, wherever that is. And I'd really like to know where my mother's jewelry is, and where all of my cameras are, and where all of my clothing is, because when they sent people in to clear our house out, they cleared it out, and I've gotten one inventory, one short inventory of all of my things, listing 100 items. And the rest of my stuff, I can't even get an answer on where it is. So, I'm just hoping for some cooperation as far as that goes, and an end to this in sight soon. We don't intend to be, we don't want to be compensated for our inconvenience, but we would very much like to be reimbursed for our loss, and we'd like to just put this behind us. It's kind of a disgusting situation, all in all. Thank you, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Mayor, as the council's aware, this item is, is a pending claim, and so, as with any pending claim, my advice to the council would be to refrain from any comments on this, this matter. And as to Ms. Brunello, if you wanted to contact me directly, I'd be happy to, to talk with you and see if, if there's any unanswered questions, if we can do our best to, to get information to you. So thank you for your testimony this evening.
Okay, Fred Gaethl?
(inaudible).
You want to wait under the, okay. Tony Roberts?
Hi, I'm Tony Roberts. I too live at 551 and 1/2 G Street, and I grew up in Galt, lived here my whole life, and I've loved this town even, even now. Now, August 9th, it was a nightmare. I do have some pictures here, could you pass around, please, just humor me on this? Because it was a horror movie. When I walked into the house to see what was coming up out of the toilet, and flowing out, and I tried to shut it off, and I tried to put the toilet seat down, and nothing was working. You know, I really couldn't do much, it was just like being in a horror movie. It was so disgusting, I still can't get the smell out of my nose or thought out of my head, but there was things floating through our room that came out of that toilet that did not belong to us. And, you know, we just want to get some answers, and, and I don't want to wind up homeless because of the situation, I don't feel that that should be right. That's about all I have to say.
Ms. Witt, the same, same answer as I'd give to Ms. Brunello, that because of the fact that this is a pending claim, my advice to the council is not to comment on the matter, but if you wanted to contact me, I'd be happy to see what I can do to assist you in getting answers to your questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming, though.
Thank you. And we are sorry about what took place.
Yeah, I know, it's a terrible thing for everybody. I, you know, we just want to be pretty fair on it, and that's, we're not asking for much more than that.
And certainly, all of us are sorry to both of you, and, and we can say that you are going to be contacted very soon as to resolving this, so.
Okay.
It's not that it's been ignored.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick Walters?
Good evening, council, and my name is Rick Walters, and thank you for letting me speak. I'm glad to hear that you guys are speaking up for yourselves when you get these attacks from this PAC or these community activists. It's time to put an end to land speculators and developers who want what they want when they want it. What about the rest of us? Do we have any say in how our city has developed? This latest recall effort of two sitting members of council and the character assassination of Tenra Boy is another example of their arrogance and disrespect for the rest of us. We, the majority, voted them into office, and now with this recall, they are telling the rest of us, "Take it or get lost." Because PACs have unlimited money and resources, they can convict, condemn... Excuse me. Can you be quiet, please? Because PACs have unlimited money and resources, they can convict, condemn, twist figures to meet their own needs, and spread hate and character assassinations, all in the name of progress. In other words, their small and narrow view of what a city should look like is the only view to be considered. Anyone can put figures together to make their particular agenda look good. When special interest groups or PACs come before council with their hands out, they won't, they don't, they do not want to hear the word "no." And when the word "no" is mentioned, this council is threatened with recall, or they are deemed insensitive to the special needs of certain political groups. As far as I can tell, there's a political takeover going on in this great little city of Galt. Has councilperson Payne or Claire been threatened with recall? No, and we would not do that to you. So why are these attacks taking place? It's all about money, uninformed citizens, greed, power, and prestige. If this group gets their way and unseats the council members that they want out, what will stop this group from doing the same thing to those they just proxied into office? Nothing. This means that the council will no longer serve the citizens, but will serve the special needs of those who have control over our council. I cannot bring myself to be hateful and mean-spirited against those who don't see the world the way I do. We talk about developing character for ourselves and our kids, and I see no way that these vicious attacks or hateful remarks makes this process better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Sandy Breck, I live at 146 Edelweiss Way, here in the beautiful city of Galt. Love Galt, love our police station, for all the things that they do, and have done for my mother so many times, and for the citizens of Galt, and also the fire department, got to plug them too. I wrote down that I wanted to talk about fire, I don't really, but I was so upset on our anniversary, my husband and I, on September 17th, woke up to the Sacramento Bee along this lake in Lake Tahoe, and it was our 20th anniversary, and I read of the fire and the young mom and baby that died. And I'm still pretty distressed about it. I'm very upset, of course, when anybody gets killed in a fire. My husband was in the Navy for many years and worked the flight deck and fires, and came home from the Navy and spent time in the firefighter academy, and has been a paramedic in Fire Station 2 in Livermore for 22 years. I've talked with a few people about, of course, fire safety and about smoke detectors in town, and maybe something can be done so we can make sure that everyone has a smoke detector in their homes. I don't really know how to go about it, but I just feel like maybe some people don't feel like it's a necessity, or $6.99, or $6.99 that they take out of their pocket to, to buy one. But, gosh, if you guys could talk about it and work out something, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna buy 10 from Randy at Ace, he said he'd give us a wonderful deal if we, like, bought 100 at a time, and they're $6.99. I just, I mean, I know there's been a lot said about the having sprinkler systems in your home, and I'm glad that you guys didn't make everybody have that in town when they built the house. That's something I think that should be, you know, a decision made by the person, but, because they do cost so much, but just a smoke alarm, gee, what lives that it can save. Gosh, okay, secondly, my fencing issue. Gosh, you guys, I just really want to put up that fence, I want to increase the size. Has anybody...
Well, Sandy, I, I believe Mr. Reboi and I have a set date to go out and do a drive-along.
Yeah, I want to apologize, I haven't been able to get to go, because I've had some family emergencies, so Don and I are going to be going, hopefully in the next week.
Okay, great. You'll see what a great job I think we've done so far in fixing it up. That corner of E Street really does look a lot better now, that the house has new windows and some new fencing. So, all right, well, I guess I'll see you at the next meeting. Well, I'd hope that maybe we could do it tonight, but it sounds like it'll be the next meeting. Okay, that's fine, there's a lot going on, I know. And I do appreciate every one of you, and...
Could I clarify one thing? Last time we talked about, I told you I support what you want to do, and I think we discussed, but I want to repeat, would you be okay if we allow you to construct your fence with the understanding that if we ever needed you to take it down and move it, that you would?
Yes.
Which, which I don't personally believe, it hasn't happened. What hasn't happened...
Relatively, yes.
It hasn't happened since our incorporation in 1946, and I don't think it's going to happen in the future, but I think if you are comfortable with that, I would hope council would support your request.
I would be, there's plenty of room for a sidewalk, and...
Right.
We planted so many trees along there right now, too.
Okay.
You weren't here last meeting, but we, we showed the pictures of your yard on big screen, so I think everyone has a really good idea of what your situation is, and hopefully we can make you happy.
Okay, great, thank you. I'll bring a new picture next time.
Thank you.
Clifton Lofton?
Yes, I don't get up here and speak too often. I think the last time I was up here, I spoke about the general plan and my concerns that it wasn't moving along, and I think one of the last things I heard was, "I don't think there's a conspiracy." But, as you can see now...
Maybe our city attorney could comment on the general plan issue, because we're all frustrated that it's not here.
Right, that was just, that was just my concern. What I'm here about tonight is some materials that's being circulated and printed in the papers from the Galt Area Citizens for Recall, and to protect Galt's future. Well, it's, the Galt Area citizens, I don't know who they are, because it's not the majority of the citizens on the local level, the, I've, I've lived here in Galt for 61 years, and it's probably a very small minority of people that are trying this. And what I'd like to read to you is some claims that these are making, and it's all about Delta Greens. Their claim, Delta Greens landowners provided 1,440 acres of mitigation land to Nature Conservancy in an agreement intended to mitigate for senior development and enhance conservative Consumans River Preserve land acquisitions. What they're saying is, they gave land to help them so they could get this senior development in. Okay, the fact, the fact is, in 1990s, the original owners of the land, which includes, now referred to as the Delta Greens, offered a portion of the land for sale, not to, not to give it to them, but for sale to the Nature Conservancy. The Conservancy arranged to have this land appraised at fair market value, and with the approval of the landowner, they agreed to purchase the property from the state of California Department of Fish and Game, they provided the funds. The purchase was completed, and the land is now managed as part of the Consumans River Preserve. During the course of negotiations for, for purchase, representatives of the Nature Conservancy and the Department of Fish and Game informed the landowners that it would not be legable, legally permissible for them to purchase, for the land to be purchased by the state and to count for mitigation in future projects. In other words, you can't have it both ways. You can't get the money and also use it for mitigation. The landowner chose to proceed with the sale anyway and collect their money. Okay. Claim number two, this website that this committee is putting a lot of this stuff on, references a $500,000 in pass-through option payments, as if they had paid this money. Fact, this statement implies that the Nature Conservancy received cash or other consideration from the developer, which this did not occur. It is not clear what they're referring to in this passage, they're just claiming it. Claim number three, in turn for this transaction, the Nature agreed to accept the mitigation and remain neutral on the seniors' project application. Fact, the Nature Conservancy is a private nonprofit organization, only government agencies can determine the adequacy of proposed mitigation measures. And as pointed out, landowners cannot both sell and get mitigation. Credit for a donation of land, a fact that was clear to the landowner and the developer at the time of this transaction. The Nature Conservancy did agree to not take a formal position or opposed, or post-opposition to the development, but retained the right to comment on the impact of the project. The Nature Conservancy has not violated this understanding. Claim number four, the Delta Green site has no particular environmental values that would pose a challenge to development, that's their claim. The fact is, the property in question has a high level of environmental sensitivity. It contains wetlands and provides important habitat for a number of protected species. In addition, development of the site would require approval of the local agency formation commission, or LAFCO. LAFCO rules specifically forbid the annexation of islands, parcels disconnected from the city, which it is. These two factors, higher environmental sensitivity and conflict with LAFCO, account for why this project is not moved forward at all.
Mr. Lofton, your five minutes are up.
Okay.
For your comments.
Let me just finish up this one section, that since the late, late 1980s, this demonstrates why it would have wasted time and would be a waste of time for taxpayer dollars and for the city to pursue this project. And you've had flyers, and I've got more flyers for anybody in the office that would like to finish reading this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Woody?
Just saw him walk outside.
Woody? Out in the lobby? Okay, John Slaughterback?
On Wednesday, September the 24th, there was a played, paid political advertisement that came out in the Galt Herald. And in it, there's some statements that are not factual. It says here, "There are 2,000 feet from irrigated pasture land between the treatment plant and Delta Green's boundary, planned boundary." I don't think anybody can see this... I don't think anybody can see this, but that's kind of the, the pictorial of the thing. But in a Galt map, I wanted to show you here what we actually got. The red is where we put our biosolids. This is Delta Green, and this is the church property, which will develop if this develops. We put biosolids here, and they seem to be talking like we don't do nothing but foot water. Well, we put human waste on this red. It's right next to the boundaries. So how they can put this ad out saying 200, 2,000 feet is ridiculous. Biosolids, we've spent almost a million dollars, the city has already, for hauling off biosolids. We're being pushed into a corner already. And I see in the budget, we've got some budgeted items that total $200,000 for Fund 07, your sewer fund, Fund 15, your upgrade fund. It's in the report. And then there's, would you believe, $314,000 on the developer. This totaled $800,000 for biosolids. We're pushed into a corner, and we're getting to the point that one of these days, and if we keep being pushed, it's not going to be that far off. We're going to be paying more for our sewer rates. Let me get into this here. We're getting, running out of time. But Arnold Schwarzenegger signed legislation establishing new incentives to discourage sprawl in the future. The state will use $5 billion pot of transportation money to encourage regions to account for compact development. California League of Cities and California State Association of Counties support this bill. The city risks losing transportation money for roads, grants for the Twin Cities overpass. If the city were to develop north of the railroad tracks, northwest of the railroad track. If the city were to spend your money, if the city were to spend your money for our environmental review and be able to add this land to the general plan, LAFCO would reject it because there would be a group of people at LAFCO's meeting to oppose annexation of this land adjacent to the sewer plant. This group will be willing to spend your money, city money, to defend itself from legal challenges from the environmental community. The prior council's majority was willing to do anything this group wanted, but lacked the leadership skills to accomplish the goal. Where was this group then? I mentioned this last time. Where was this group four years ago when we didn't, we accomplished nothing about the upgrade or what we were, what we were going to do? Raboy was elected to represent the people of Galt and not jump on the bandwagon and go where the money leads. Raboy has never accepted money from special interest groups. Raboy can't be bought. That's integrity. Wouldn't it have been nice to have some of that in Washington? They have a forum. I wanted to mention that they've got a forum tomorrow, Wednesday night at 6:30 at the Chabola Center. Everybody needs to attend. I'm confused about the environmental, I mean, the Brown Act. Who's supposed to be held, what standards are we supposed to be held? I was told by a person attending some of these meeting packs that Barbara Payne was in an attendance and was in collaboration with this pack. Where does this Brown Act come into play for council members? You know, I've heard about it for me, but why ain't the council under this Brown Act? The point is, this city has been trying to be controlled, but developers made a lot of money on all of this. Developed this, this, eight years, developers have made money. The real estate's made money. Building supplies made money. The only one that's hurting is the citizens. The citizens of Galt got built, citizens of the United States got to build this whole mess out now, and they've made money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Gross, and I live in the city of Galt. I think it's important that we hear the last claim that Cliff was trying to tell you guys about in the handout that he gave you, so I'm going to read it. And if, for the public, if you didn't know what this is, this is an email from John Eaton, who, I mean, from Mike Eaton, who is part of the Nature Conservancy. Claim number five, Delta Greens is smart growth. Fact, the Sacramento area Council for Governments did a rigorous evaluation of the land use and transportation options for the Sacramento region with the goal to identify land use patterns that would minimize vehicle traffic and maximize opportunities for pedestrians, bicycle, and transit trips. Based on that evaluation, in 2006, Secog produced a smart growth blueprint for the region. Delta Greens is not in Secog's blueprint. And the new growth areas identified in Galt's general plan update are generally consistent with the blue plan. Galt is free to ignore the blueprint, but Secog has indicated that it will give a preference to funding local transportation projects if they are consistent with the blueprint. In other words, Galt could lose state and federal transportation dollars if it proceeds with Delta Greens. Delta Greens is anything but smart growth for Galt. I hope this is useful, and signed, Mike Eaton. And again, we have copies if anybody wants them. Well, I'm up here too, totally different subject, but I've lived in Galt for 50 years, and as an adult, there were a lot of years when it wasn't comfortable to come before city council and talk, and that's changed. And it started to change even before the council changed three years ago. It was slow. It was still intimidating, but I have been before the board before it did change. Now it's so much easier and comfortable, and we appreciate the ability to come here before all of you. Also in Galt, growing up here, there's been a lot of years when you didn't feel comfortable talking with a lot of other officials in Galt, including the police chief. Well, that's changed too. And I want to tell you all that you did a great job in who you hired, and I really appreciate him. And he obviously cares about the people in Galt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy, Darryl wasn't here the last meeting when you got up to talk about the donations for, stand down. Okay.
Al Baldwin, do you want to speak now, or do you want to wait for the train noise? I see you had another issue as well.
I'm going to cover it.
Okay.
I mean, we may not cover it later. Al Baldwin, the Concerned Citizen of Galt, a city of character, and I'm here to make a few good comments and some questions. First of all, I want to thank our Public Works Director for solving an opportunity, and I don't want to call it a problem. It was an opportunity to change a street light so traffic can move faster and safer. And I was amazed within two weeks, not that he didn't do it, but within two weeks, it was corrected and traffic is moving much better. And I, I didn't even know it was done. I had people tell me. So I want to say thank you very much. You probably didn't even know that I knew it. But it was wonderful, and it was very quick response, and I appreciate that. Second, the, the trains, I mentioned about two months ago that they were, they weren't making as much noise. Well, they must have hired a new crew because the trains in Galt are starting to do their, their little beep, 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 hoot, 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 bleh, all the way through from, say, Third Street all the way down to Kloster, wherever you want to go.
How did that go again, Al? Can you tell us?
Toot, 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 beep, 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 boop. And I'll tell you, it was nice for a while, not that they were quiet, but at least they weren't as loud. And I would sure like to see something done. Now, years ago, when I was pushing for the quiet zone, I was asked if I could not push so hard because there were negotiations going on with the railroad, and we didn't want to disturb the negotiations because for some reason they thought I had some kind of power. Well, I curtailed it. I called the newspaper, told them I didn't want to do the article, and didn't want to push it. Nothing's happened. So now, I'm going to do something a little different. If we can't get anything done, if the council can't write a letter, if the staff can't do anything to recommend that they stop their loud tooting or just do it the way they're supposed to do it, and I don't see anything change within three to four weeks, and that would be time enough to get a letter out and to send it, and they can get back. We'll start a writing campaign to the railroad. I will personally put postage on letters. I will give 25 of these out, and citizens will write 25 letters on their feelings, not mine, their feelings, to the railroad. I will also do it, and I will email them to let them know that there'll be letters coming now. This won't be very much. I mean, what can you say? Letters to the railroad, they're huge. Well, this may go on for about four months, I would say. 25 letters, every time they send one, we'll wait a week or two weeks, then we'll get some more going out. They'll be postage paid. That's my own personal little, little thing to help out. Andrew said at the last meeting that there was somebody that was concerned, and believe me, I'm willing to work with him, but I don't know if you can afford to do anything right now to see how much it would cost. That was the reason they couldn't do anything before. They said they couldn't do any kind of checking on it, maybe 60 grand. They couldn't afford it. So I don't see how you can afford it now. I mean, you guys are so getting down, down and dirty right now. So I'm not expecting that. The next thing is, is I was, I was very concerned, pardon me, because the lady that got up here about her fence, it's been two weeks. I could leave here and get to her house within 45 seconds, give or take. Two of you live on the west side, three of you do, and two on the east side. It's not that far to go to take a look at it.
It wasn't just going to be looking at her fences, it was going to be looking at all the areas in Galt where we have that same issue.
That's fine, but you haven't even looked at her house. You haven't looked at her area. You can look across the street. You can see the pictures and see what's going on. And a good suggestion that I think that Darryl made, put it up, and if you have to tear it down, they'll tear it down. They put up a nice lattice fence there. It's about six feet, but it's on their property and it's facing into their property, and it looks real nice. I can't see why you just can't do it and then tear it down if it's violating something in the future. Why wait more than two weeks? This has, this has been a long time for you to go out and look at. If you're going to look at the whole city, you're going to change an ordinance for the whole city, I'm assuming, because this shouldn't take that long. And I'm so sorry to hear that, you know, that was the case, because she, they deserve it. They've tried real hard. They're being very patient, and they're nice people. I went out and talked to them personally. Didn't take me that long. So, I mean, I'm just thinking you should do the same thing. Let's see. Oh, yeah, I'd like to be, I'd like the council and the staff to be more transparent with their funding. Lodi put it in the paper this morning. It was the front page. It said that they're having major problems. The weak economy will cease. We raised more than 1.3 million in sales and property tax revenue, and we're going through that right now. Percentage-wise, we may even be bigger than they are. So I'm just suggesting that you come out with a statement and let us know how Galt's doing. There's a lot of worry.
Thank you.
Any general comments about the financial state of the city, Jason?
Generally, we, we have been working on some information that we're going to be providing to the council as well as the papers. Generally speaking, we're more insulated from some of the downturn. The Lodi's biggest downturn is with sales tax. That was more than half of their downturn, and nearly all of that was a result of auto sales. Auto sales, as you know, is down almost 35%. In some areas, it's higher than that. So almost all of that decrease is a result of auto sales, and we're fortunate, I guess, right now that we don't have auto sales. In many years, we'd love to have auto sales, but right now, it's, it's a good thing because we're not experiencing that downturn. There are some, there will be some revisions to our sales tax estimates and property tax, but it won't be near the hit that the Lodi is experiencing because Galt's economy is a little bit more insulated than that. But the finance director is working on putting together some numbers that should be out in the next week.
All right. Thank you.
That's all I have for now.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak under general comments? Mr. Hodge, do you want to wait until the train noise? Okay. Just wanted to make a general comment here. Vice Mayor Haynes and I have been quite adamant from the beginning that the group that was seeking to remove us from office was being backed by one developer. They filed their paperwork, their first official financial statements, with the county this week, and of the $24,000 in loans that these two groups received, all 24,000 came from one developer, the one that owns the Delta Greens project. These documents are public record. They're all available at the county. I encourage everyone in the public to go out and get yourself a copy. Right, that takes us to the information consent calendar. Councilwoman Payne pulled item D6, that is, the wastewater fund transfer for the lift station pump replacement.
Yeah. We are, the way I understand this, we're taking money that was allocated for something today to use it on, on another lift station that has come up that needs attention.
That's correct.
Okay. And the one that we're working on now, the one that we're taking the money from one fund to the other, is because it was like, I think, third on the list or something, was it?
At the time we prepared the budget, it was a lesser priority. We actually, for the current year, put the money for the lift station improvements into the Live Oak Lift Station. We're rebuilding that one. That was the one for this year. We were still doing the bypass improvements. Unfortunately, the pumps at the A Street Lift Station are aging and potentially failing at a faster rate than we thought. We thought we could squeak by for another year. We believe our money's better spent at that point, keeping that lift station functioning rather than trying to provide some extra improvements for bypass at the other one.
And I, and I don't disagree with that. I guess my question is, if there were other lift stations that were in front of it, are we okay with postponing those?
There were no others in front of it. It was the one to be done next year. We're just moving it ahead one year.
So there's no critical timeframe on, on those?
Only be until, prior to it failing, and we believe we can go forward with the current schedule with this, with this substitution at this point. Six months from now, we, you know, we continue to reassess the condition of the lift stations, and as things age or break faster than what we anticipate, we will come back with other adjustments if necessary. But right now, we don't anticipate any further adjustments.
Okay. Well, my concern was that we were maybe leaving some critical work left undone. I know this is critical too, but I just was hoping that we weren't running into problems by not taking care of what we already had budgeted.
We don't anticipate that, but we can't really predict the future. We're trying to reprioritize as we go. This is the most critical need that we have right now.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I would move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I think Darryl has a question.
Go ahead, we'll get a second. Then I'll ask a question. I'll second it, sure.
Okay. Darryl?
Does that station, or will that station, have a emergency generator in case of power failure?
In the future, yes. Right now, it does not. The improvements we're doing right now is just to replace the pumps.
Okay. Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Prove five zero. Next item was item D7 that was pulled by the Public Works Director in light of a revision to the proclamation, the resolution. Do you want to highlight what the changes were, Greg?
Basically, the discussion that was held in closed session relative to the acquisition process is the reason for the change in the resolution.
Any comments by council?
I have no comments.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, she voted in here. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Prove five zero. Do we have a motion on the remainder of the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Prove five zero. Takes us to presentations. I have this under presentations tonight, just basically to get it done quickly because I was expecting some speakers here tonight. The only reason that I have this on the agenda is I wanted to discuss some changes that came up in light of a meeting that I had with SMUD and members of our staff. And that was mainly in regards to the 20% mandate that we discussed on individual residential projects for solar participation with the SMUD Solar Smart Home Program. And after discussing this with SMUD, I feel that it would be in the best interest of the city to move forward with a 20% commitment to all residential developments as a whole because a lot of the, a lot of the benefits that these developers garner from participating in this program require that the entire development be built out to SMUD's solar smart home standards. So after discussing this with Jason, it kind of just seems like it would be easier for us to find developers that would be willing to participate on the whole development than trying to tell individual developers that they only need to do 20% of their development. There's items that came up like plan changes that they call clearing the deck, where they essentially have to move pipes and air vents that are on, on the roof to the outside edges of the home in order to make space for the solar installation. And you can, you can imagine, if you're a developer, having to do this on five or six homes in your development. It's much easier to plan the whole development to participate this way. It's much easier to plan the whole development to participate this way. SMUD says that they've been able to find developers that are willing to do it across the county. So I think when I bring this plan forward on the twenty-first, my program will make that as a proposal instead of what we had discussed earlier, so.
I think, just a clarification, um, SMUD actually offers incentives to developers that wanna participate in this, and they require that a hundred percent of the homes in a specific development be solar smart. So, and there's some, some significant benefits to the development if they choose to participate.
They, they get advertising in all the SMUD bills that go out, you guys have all seen them. I think there's 700,000 that get mailed out across the county, so.
Right, I think they, they gave us a number as far as number of new home communities in the last year that have participated. I think, where they say in Sacramento County, it was almost thirty-five percent of all new developments in the county have been developed using the solar smart home, um, program, which is, it was pretty amazing to me. I think in this economic climate, developers are looking for any edge they can get in selling their homes, and that's certainly one of the things that they can offer to prospective buyers.
And one of the interesting things that, uh, SMUD said was that it, it doesn't seem that the, the developers see the need in actually passing the cost on to the homeowner, because they garner so many benefits from the advertising and the, uh, the added expertise that SMUD offers, so. Pretty positive. But they gave us an estimate also on what it, what it costs per home now to do a traditional solar installation on an existing home. And I think with SMUD's additional rebate, it's down around $11,000 now. So it's come down over $4,000 in the last two years, pretty significant.
I wanted to let you know a couple of recent developments. Um, at CACOG, I'm the vice chair of the Climate Change and Air Quality Committee, and, uh, we had a discussion just this month at our meeting. And what we're trying to do is through the region, get some, some consistency as a developer builds a home, say in Galt or Elk Grove, that there's commonality or in the county. And, uh, two things came up. I've asked, uh, Julia Burrows to chat with you, and I don't know if she's already contacted you or not, but she will. Roseville, uh, she's assistant city manager, and they've had more of these than anyone in the region and been very, very successful. So I'd asked her, and she volunteered to chat with Jason and share some of our existing building codes, other things that we can save staff time and, and costs on if we want to try and pattern some of our things after that. Uh, at the committee, though, we are, CACOG is, uh, spending money, and we just got a, uh, an offer, which I think we'll accept, of a $30,000 free legal work that will be used at the CACOG level, but then that work will be shared with any of the jurisdictions within CACOG again, so that cities don't have to spend their money to research building codes and fire codes and things. So, um, I'll, I'll keep you, uh, abreast of what our committee's doing and as this is coming forward. But all of those things will help, I think, for where we're trying to get without us having to spend the money and the staff time. And the last one that came up, Lois Wright of SMUD, talked to us and asked the committee to consider, and, and we are considering, um, there is an efficiency of putting solar in one home at a time, and there's an efficiency of allowing, say, a hundred homes to share a common solar installation in the neighborhood. And, and SMUD is now looking at sort of, you know, where is that cost break? Is it better to do a house at a time, or is it better in the planning and the city can adopt that you will set aside, I'll pick a number, an acre, and put a solar facility on the acre that powers the hundred homes? So as we, as we get that information, SMUD will probably be doing most of the work on that. Uh, but they have asked CACOG and thereby its, its members to allow or at least consider in our building codes and things that, would, would we allow that? And, uh, so they're, we're gonna be looking at that too. So there's quite a bit happening, and I'll, I'll keep you abreast of that.
At the local government commission meeting, uh, last Thursday night, city of, uh, the city of Lincoln was actually discussing their general plan, and they were talking a little, a little bit about what they wanna do with solar. They, they wanna do basically what, what you're talking about with Lois making her presentation. They want to develop their villages with shared solar installations. One of the problems that they've encountered, though, is that the homeowners won't be eligible for the federal tax credits, the state tax credits, so.
We think we can address that.
Right, they're trying to find ways through, uh, government.
There's a, there's a trigger where that becomes a utility.
Right.
And then they have the cost of being a utility. So we're, we're gonna work with our, our congressional members and see if we can't take care of that. But you're right, they, that, that is right now an obstacle.
Great. I think we have a speaker?
Fred Gable, I live in the city. Just to give you a little background, my degree in college was environmental science. I've spent the last thirty years, I haven't been working in it, but I follow it. In fact, I, uh, just took a course at CRC last semester. I think there's one flaw in this whole plan, and this, that the city is not leading. The city should be demonstrating the viability and the feasibility of retrofit by doing it themselves. The city is in, I calculated, probably the top four users of electricity in the city boundaries. Uh, I don't know exactly what you're using, but I sketched out a plan, a relatively easy plan, where you could put solar in, or wind, or whatever you want, cut the carbon footprint, and really not cost the taxpayers anything. You'd have to take a bond, but it would end up being revenue neutral. It wouldn't save anybody anything either, you know, well, it might have it over twelve or fourteen years. But I think if you want the citizens to buy into this program, you're gonna have to lead by example. And that would be starting to solarize the city. I mean, the wastewater treatment plant, I can't imagine what the electric use is out there. Uh, they're, they're horrific electricity users. City Hall is in bad, the police department, you know, and when you start adding it up, there's an awful lot of buildings in the city, and they use them an awful lot of electric. And if you're trying to cut the carbon footprint, the first place you go is the biggest users. And I think the city, I was trying to figure out, the air products place out there uses a lot of electricity, and the school districts do. But outside of that, you guys are the biggest ones.
Cardinal Glass, I think, uses quite a bit when they're at.
Glass, I didn't know we had a glass company in town, but yeah, they would use a lot of.
They're the largest. Fred, I'd be glad to see what you've sketched out. Um, we've looked at that. I've had six meetings with the people who finance these projects. And unfortunately, we don't qualify for the tax benefits, because we're a city, that private folks do.
Yeah, no, it wouldn't be based on cash.
That cause these to pencil out. But depending on what the Congress does, if they reauthorize the solar credit, and what we can, yeah, what we can do is with a third party who can enjoy those benefits, do a, a lease option, let them build it, let them get the credits that allows them to lease the facility at a lower cost. And I've had them meet with, uh, with the school district, the high school district already, and they've put a proposal together for them, so. But you're right, the waste treatment plant probably is the first best place to look, 'cause we already have the land to put the, uh, units. I had them look at our police department as well. They do a cantilever panel that acts as shade for the vehicles, we're parked underneath it, but it moves to follow the sun to generate power, so. But, but if yours pencils out, we'd be glad to look at it.
I haven't done the math, but I can, give me a call.
Okay. It is a great point, because, uh, the El Dorado irrigation district, I think I talked about this at a previous meeting, they installed a $3 million solar array at their wastewater treatment plant on Latrobe Road. At that time, PG&E was offering a fifty-fifty rebate, so they immediately upon completion got a $1.5 million check from PG&E. And they changed their pumping cycles so that they basically pump water at night now. And they sell all of the electricity back during peak hours of the day.
Right.
So essentially, what they've done, they've gone from an $80,000 a month utility bill to $18, which is what it costs to be on PG&E's grid.
Yeah, I, I actually talked to Tom Gemma too, because the schools, the high school's a little worse than the elementary district in that they do operate summer school, but elementary schools are basically during the summer cash cows. They can be sitting there generating electricity, and nobody's in the buildings.
Right.
So they're, they're selling it back when the, when SMUD needs the most electric, and then using it back out the backside.
Yeah, and after speaking with SMUD, you know, it's, it's apparent that SMUD's not looking to make money. They're looking to have a resource available when it comes time for peak energy demands. That's, that's really what they're after.
Yeah, mine's not based on anything to do with making money. There's, I don't think there's any way with SMUD's rates that you can make money either, SMUD or the city or homeowners. I, I think it's, uh, a combination of cutting the carbon footprint and, you know, truthfully, the one benefit I saw if I solarize my houses, I don't have to worry about setting my thermostat up in the, you know, the hundred and ten degree days. I can run the puppy at seventy-two degrees and be comfortable, right? So I, you know, there wasn't really any, any cost benefit there, a little bit over the long run, but it, it was more to cut the carbon footprint and rely less on a grid that we know. And we've had it, what, two or three times this summer, where they came awfully close to running out of electricity. So the more we can put into the system, the less we have to worry about, um, brownouts.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
Good evening, mayor, council members, John Costa with the Building Industry Association. I submitted a letter yesterday, I, I hope you all got that, kinda highlighting some of the concerns we had. Um, I'm pleased to hear the discussion today as far as the other options that are out there, as far as what CACOG's looking at, what Roseville has done. Um, I had the opportunity of, of being part of Roseville's Best Homes Committee, is what they called it, in over a year span. I looked at a lot of the issues I had, had highlighted in the, the letter, and, and really addressed those issues as it pertained to what CACOG is looking at as more compact development, some of the issues that come about when you have solar. And, and Roseville really looked at some of those issues, tried best to modify the program to fit. Um, they originally looked at a mandate and considered a voluntary program at ten percent, which then, um, currently are meeting well over fifty percent of all new homes coming through the city, is meeting, uh, their best homes program, which is more than just solar. Um, and as it's stated, you know, that, that, uh, a lot of the developers out there are looking at ways in which to design product that will sell, obviously. And in this given market, it's tough. Solar and other energy-efficient products do add costs. Um, but with, with SMUD and with, uh, Roseville Electric, there are rebates out there that they put forward to try to, to kickstart their programs, and really have made great strides, like Roseville's and SMUD, as I indicated in the letter, have done well over 4,000 units, uh, in the greater Sacramento region, or in Sacramento County, I should say. With respects to Sunrise Douglas, there's a lot of projects out there that are all solar. Members like Lenar have really stepped up to try to develop a full product with solar and other energy-efficient, um, components to that. So I, I'm, I wasn't aware that this was going forward on the twenty-first, but would like to recommend an opportunity to meet with, with yourself and your staff to try to address some of the issues I laid out. And then, please, I, I would encourage you, talking to Roseville, how they worked through some of those issues, and have made a great program, and move forward with it.
All right. Thank you.
John Costa, before you leave, I received your letter, and I was appreciative that you took the time to point out another point of view and give us some more information. And I would encourage, I would encourage any other, um, information that you can give us before we make final decisions to issue insurance.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for taking the time to do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
All right, that takes us to communications, and the first item under communications is train noise quiet zones. At this time, I'd like to call forward Mike Hodge. He's got a letter to the city of Galt that, uh, he'd like to read into the record.
Good evening, uh, mayor and city council members. Uh, I'm sure that you often get attacked. Listened to a couple of comments this evening. Uh, my point here is, uh, not to attack you, but to bring forward a need for a quiet zone in the, the city of Galt. And I'm sure I'm not telling you something that somebody hasn't already told you before, like the gentleman here. What I have done is, uh, quite a bit of research regarding what the requirements are to establish a quiet zone, and, uh, had quite a bit of contact with Letitia Page, the project manager for the city of Elk Grove, on the process that they went through to establish quiet zones. Uh, it took them approximately two years from the time they really started to actually get two quiet zones in place. They have a third quiet zone that they want to establish. And obviously, the funding source for quiet zones is what causes, you know, the time to take place. Uh, what I, uh, wanted to do was to read a letter that I sent to Mayor Meredith on the sixteenth of September. But after his having, uh, the, the kindness to meet with me at least twice, once a meeting with him and the, uh, city manager, and also, uh, some, uh, very helpful information from Greg Halliday regarding the status of the efforts that had been taken place so far. So I'll just go ahead and read this into the record for you. Reference creating a quiet zone. Mayor Meredith, thank you for taking the time to meet with me on September the fifteenth concerning the creation of a quiet zone in Galt. I also want to thank Greg Halliday for sharing information about the process for creating a quiet zone. After researching the process for creating a quiet zone, it is apparent that time and money will be needed to create a quiet zone in Galt. There are many reasons for doing this, and the time to start the process is now. Galt is a growing bedroom community predicted to reach a population of over 30,000 by the year 2015. I have found Galt a pleasant community, having only lived in the area for approximately one month at 610 Portland Lane near Carillion. As I mentioned in an earlier email, the north-south tracks that come down through the major part of the city carry thirty to forty trains a day at a minimum, with many of them running during the evening hours. I have found the noise very irritating, and I'm sure not helpful since it interferes with sleep. Uh, since this is a bedroom community, a, a lot of people here work, uh, in other communities, uh, it is imperative that they be able to get the rest. Elk Grove was faced with a similar, similar problem, and on April the twenty-sixth, two thousand and six, they reported on a study conducted by a contractor. The study found that Elk Grove had fourteen crossings that required improvements to meet the quiet zone criteria at an estimated cost of 514,000 to 200, to, excuse me, to $750,000. Because of the administrative requirements for establishing a quiet zone, it was estimated to take from one to one and a half years. Elk Grove has now established a, a quiet zone, and they're one of thirteen cities in California that have done so. Thus, it is imperative that Galt take action now to create a quiet zone by, one, immediately funding a study to determine the improvements needed to the intersections, and I'm recommending that it be handled in two phases. Uh, the ma- major north-south crossings need to be taken care of, because that's where the majority of the people actually live. The development over where I live is only affected by the spurs that run through there, the one spur that runs across Carillion Boulevard. So I think that would be a secondary quiet zone consideration. But anyway, the major issue here is that a, a study has to be conducted, an engineering study, and it will probably run somewhere between 60 and a hundred thousand dollars at least to do that, because the engineers have to come in and cite every one of them and determine the requirements. Second, um, this, this cost of the study needs to be put into your budget now, because it's gonna be two years, even if you do the study, before anything can even occur. So this money needs to be put in now. I also recommend that you integrate the, the cost for this quiet zone with the other things that you're planning to do. There was a reference in the, the plan in regards to safety improvements for school crossings, and so there's money that has to be done there to build sidewalks, for example, at Carillion Boulevard. Uh, there is a, a desire to improve the, the old town area and make it more attractive, and hopefully bring people in and, and, you know, increase sales and whatnot. This needs to be planned as you plan that, rather than planning for the, the old town area and then not doing anything to fix the railroad crossings. Uh, finally, uh, there's a requirement, uh, in your, in your general plan, under noise mitigation, under policy, that you meet EIR guidelines, and they require that the city incorporate noise mitigation into their planning. So my recommendation is that we begin now, and that the funding, uh, become a, a priority issue for you to at least get the study started, uh, so that we'll know in the long term what it's gonna cost to do that.
Jason, what is the feasibility of using redevelopment money to achieve the quiet zones in the, uh, old town area? In light of the fact that, you know, we've approved two major redevelopment projects in Old Town. We've got the Galt Place Senior High-Rise Development, we've also got the IOOF Building. I think it's the intent of all five of us on the council to create a, a positive, peaceful shopping environment, living environment in Old Town. What is the feasibility that we can actually use redevelopment funds, should they become available, to, uh, to complete this study?
I think my initial response would be, to the extent that it benefits the redevelopment area, which includes the old town and that area, that, that it would be an eligible expense. We'd have to look into a little bit more detail, but, um, I think it would, probably would be eligible.
Any questions for Mr. Hodge from the council?
No questions for him, but I hear what you say, Jason, but are, are we looking at a possibility in the next couple of years to get funding for the study?
Well, right now, the study isn't in the budget. You know, we have some issues right now relating to redevelopment and the funding of that. As soon as those issues are resolved, we intend to come back to council and take a look at what type of redevelopment projects the council is interested in pursuing. We've already had a discussion earlier this summer about the C Street corridor plan, some of those projects along C Street and the railroad property in particular along Fourth Street, improving some of those things. This could be another one that's in the mix and we could prioritize those things and potentially do a bond issuance at some point to get some of those projects off the ground. The first phase, Mr. Hodge mentioned, would be for his project in particular, would be doing the necessary evaluations and studies to determine what ultimate improvements are needed. We don't have sufficient redevelopment funds right now in the current fiscal year. We'll revisit that, you know, in the near future, something that we can plan for as we move forward.
It's my understanding that the state is taking a big portion of our, if not all of our redevelopment funds for this year. And I didn't want to give you any false hopes, but I was interested, did Elk Grove share with you how they funded their quiet zone?
Yes, ma'am. They used some money in what they called a workforce grant to accomplish the quiet zones.
Do you have any information on what that grant is?
I don't. And, you know, as a private citizen, you know, trying to get information sometimes out of government agencies is a little bit difficult. And not that they weren't cooperative. Letitia Page was very cooperative about the process. But she didn't know about the funding sources itself. She was a project person, per se.
Well, I think it's a good idea and I think we would all like to see this happen. One thing I've learned, being on the council for four years, is patience. So I'm warning you. But I think you can count on us pursuing it. I didn't mean to discourage you at all. I just know that currently with the economy like it is, I don't see money being readily available, but I think it's a great idea. Don't want to lose the idea.
Well, I do appreciate the dilemma financially, but I do believe that leadership is called here and I believe that you really do need to put this into your city plan. You've got to do it now because of the time it takes to actually fund the improvements to the crossings. I mean, the plan itself, just coming up with this is expensive. But then, once you do that, you've got to engineer out every one of those crossings in order to meet the requirements for supplemental safety standards. So, thank you very much, Mayor and City Council, for listening to this. I will be back.
Have you only been here for one month?
Yes, ma'am.
You know what? That's great. You've only lived in Galt for one month and you're already part of the community and taking an interest and coming to council meetings. Hope to keep it up.
It was because I was losing sleep. Thank you.
Daryl, yeah, I want to share a couple of things if I could. If it's all right with the council, the governmental affairs representative I mentioned, I chatted with the railroad a while back and I know Jason has. Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like if the two of us could give him a call and sort of Al's comments. First, I think we ought to establish, they have a requirement to do certain things. I'd like to chat with them and make sure they're not exceeding that requirement. So if there's a way to get any immediate quieting, that perhaps we can get it from them, if council's all right with that. Second, our federal lobbyist, Pete Eves, will be here on the 21st. And I think we ought to ask him what he knows about quiet zones, grants, federal funding, you know, what are other cities doing? He's also working with Elk Grove and maybe help get them the grant that they use to do this. I would task him to let us know what funding sources are available at the state or federal level. You're probably very aware, as aware as you already seem, that on the ballot that we will be voting on in November is a bond for a high-speed rail system, which it's designed to go right down that railroad track that you're talking about. If that's approved, which it's not going to get built anytime soon, then they will have to pay for all those requirements because there won't be the traditional crossings, train going 180, 200 miles an hour. It'll have all sorts of things to allow it to come through here without the typical thing. So that wouldn't be soon, but there might be some hope that that would be a funding source to make all the corrections we need. So just some things for us to be looking at. And then, I think you already know, but our city is also part of a study to look at a commuter train that would come through that same alignment and whether there might be some funding in that, if that's ever approved, to make some of those. So just to help you with your library of information, but you've done a heck of a job creating your own library of information. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good question, Mr. Hodge. On the train that's keeping you awake, is it the train noise or is it the horns that are keeping you awake?
It's the horn noise. I mean, the trains themselves, because of their just sheer size and weight and how many cars they carry behind them, you can even hear that noise as well. It's not that noise that's disturbing, though. It's the train horn itself and the requirement that the engineer blow that whistle three times before they cross the crossing. And so because of the number of crossings, some of them just lean on the whistle and just blow it all the way through because if they don't do it and they get caught not doing it properly, they'll get fined.
Yeah. And your train goes by very slow, so.
This train that comes across on Carillion, that travel there is not too bad. But I tell you, I counted them one night. And there were at least 15 trains that went through between about 10 o'clock and about 4 o'clock in the morning. And when they went through, they carry heavy traffic at night because it doesn't interfere quite as much with the traffic in the daytime. So they make them longer and so they even make more noise as they rumble through.
I could have the council's benefit. We have spoken about this with Mr. Luhon. This came up a year ago at budget time. We talked about it then. I have a lot of documentation from Elk Grove about their program. I'm not familiar with this actual grant, but I'm familiar with the people that were involved in the program. I have the materials. You know, what we're looking for is the money to move forward with that. There's very specific direction to the engineers about the noise, the duration. Because of the proximity of our crossings, sometimes one, two, two, two is a long drawn out. But they have spoken with the engineers and Mr. Luhon has told us that they are doing what is the prescribed or required method. Now, they're not here listening and taping it to ensure that, but they are communicating with the engineers to try to, to the best they can, ensure they're not exceeding what they have to do.
That conversation we had with them was about two weeks ago. So it's a recent conversation. And they shared with us some information about the quiet zones. And there's actually quite a lot of information that we've been gathering. And like Greg said, in order to really do the study, it requires significant investment of $60,000 to $100,000 to do that work. So that's the one thing we're kind of waiting for. And in this economy, it's not a good time to be investing that, although there may be some grant opportunities that we're certainly going to look into and there may be some ability to use other sources such as redevelopment funds. So we'll continue to press forward and see what avenues we might have to proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second item was, under Communications, was the Simmerhorn Commercial Project. This is another effort to get some facts out there. I had a call from a resident of this community asking why myself and two other members of the city council chased the Walmart Big Box Project onto the Twin Cities location and away from the Simmerhorn Commercial Project. And I tried to explain to this resident that that's not exactly what took place. There was actually a kind of a dispute between the developer and Walmart. So I'm going to let Sandy kind of illustrate exactly what took place with Walmart and the Simmerhorn Commercial Project that led to Walmart acquiring property in another portion of town.
Well, basically Walmart started the process at the Simmerhorn property in 2004, I believe. They issued a notice of preparation on the environmental document in September of 2005. It was reissued in July of 2007, just because of some time delays. The whole problem with the Simmerhorn Commercial Project was always that the developer wanted Walmart there as an anchor, but they also wanted some additional square footage to make the project pencil out for them. So they were trying to get at least a couple of drive-through restaurants and sit-down restaurants in that first phase along with the Walmart. In addition, the Walmart, originally in the project description, was about 196,000 square feet plus 14,000 square feet of garden center. So the traffic from that was fairly significant, plus the restaurant pads. Without the Central Galt Interchange already constructed and in place in its new configuration, the current interchange just cannot handle that and the adjacent roads could not either. They were trying to use the first phase going through Simmerhorn. That had a number of issues as well. So ultimately, basically Walmart decided that their timing was such that they wanted to try a different location and informed us that they were going to seek the Twin Cities Road Site.
Okay. So Mr. Neely was actually the Galt resident that called me. He told me he'd be watching tonight on our live streaming, so I hope you got your question answered. And, you know, it's really easy to make accusations, a lot harder to actually back them up with facts. I've been quite open from the beginning that we weren't the ones that chased Walmart over to the Twin Cities location. It was their own decision and, you know, that's not a project that has officially been approved by the city council yet. They will be coming back in the next year to move forward with their project. The Planning Commission will have to approve. If it's not approved, it'll be appealed to the Galt City Council. So there'll be lots more information to come.
Mayor, let me ask Sandy something. It's my understanding that Walmart and the developer were going to have to, in a combination, put up $6 million for the realignment of Simmerhorn. Is that, does that sound right?
I'm not sure what the dollar amount was.
And the realignment was to handle the traffic? Is that the way it goes?
They were going to have to reconfigure, some of the mitigation would involve reconfiguring the Simmerhorn Bridge across Highway 99 to connect with Lincoln Way because Lincoln Way and Simmerhorn was one of the significant intersections that was going to be impacted. There were actually 24 different intersections throughout that were in this study for the EIR.
You know, that Simmerhorn project, I spoke to Lucy Parks last week to see if there's anything working and she said there had not been any interest at all in it. And I'm thinking one of the problems is the cost for that alignment. Is that something that's always going to be required for something to locate? Or is it because the Walmart store is going to be so big? Is there any way that we could attract something there?
One of the biggest issues with that site is just that the Central Galt Interchange is not done yet. So they were trying to load all of the traffic using Simmerhorn, which is sort of the only other option. And Simmerhorn is not really set up for that amount of traffic either. So I think some uses could go there now. In addition, the timing on the interchange is such that, you know, in a few years, they'll be able to develop that site with the interchange in place and I think that'll be pretty good.
That project is listed in the Traffic Congestion Improvement Program, the TCIP. So it's not necessarily just a requirement of that one particular project. It'll be funded by development fees from a variety of developments that occur. This issue had to do with the timing. That overall Simmerhorn project, I think is a $28 million project. The first phase is about $8 million and that's to realign the bridge over 99 and also to try to get a link through to Amador, which we found from talking with the railroad, they're going to want us to give up two crossings for that once. That's going to be decades off probably before we get that actual link going through. They were offering to front the money for that development in order to make that happen and bring the development to fruition before we did the interchange.
They meaning Walmart?
Meaning the developer of that property. If the council wanted to bring that project forward in funding, you'd be taking money that you have from the same fund you're using for the Central Galt Interchange.
Do you think that it will always have to be funded by developer fees?
According to the TCIP, it is partially funded by developers, partially funded through non-development sources. Majority of the problem there is related to new growth, not 100% of the deficiency. I don't remember the exact proportion. I think maybe it's 75% funded by overall new development.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to reiterate, I don't want the facts to get muddied at all. There was nothing that any member of the city council, not a single one of the five of us, did to move the Walmart project from the Simmerhorn Commercial area to Twin Cities. Nothing. Not a single thing. It was their own decision. So.
I might also add that there has been discussion with the Walmart applicant to include the Simmerhorn Commercial site in the EIR as a possible alternative site as well. So, you know, they are still looking at that site if the Twin Cities doesn't work out for them.
All right. Thank you, Sandy. Under our regular calendar, item I-1.
Before you go, I have an odd communication. I noticed in the August 29th Sacramento Business Journal that the state printing plant is looking to build a new facility in the region. It'll be quarter of a million square feet, has a lot of jobs. And Governor Schwarzenegger had identified it as when the new ones built that they want it to be a LEED certified, meaning that it's, you know, a state-of-the-art green facility. And I'd like to work with staff and see if we could bid on getting that plant down here.
The state has a, the state has a policy, I believe, that all new state buildings have to be within five miles of downtown, I believe.
But SACOG also has goals to quit getting everyone in the region to drive up Highway 99 inside that circle. And I'd like to see if these people will put their building and their money where their mouth is. And I'd like to advocate and fight for that facility and maybe it is or isn't a good idea, but I'd like to look into it. And I'd like to get SACOG and the Air District and others to see if they'd support us to get the state to quit building everything in one place, creating traffic congestion. And we are a reverse commute and we've talked about this and I think as someone said earlier, we need to lead by example. It's time we fight to get jobs and businesses here instead of downtown Sacramento.
I agree.
If you guys are okay, I mean, let's at least look into it.
I think it's a good idea.
I think you should. I agree.
Thank you, Daryl.
Thanks.
Under the regular calendar, item I-1, under the city manager's office, is the health benefit renewal for 2008 to 2009. At this time, I'll turn it over to our Human Resources Administrator, Paula Islos.
Okay, before you, tonight is a recommendation to renew the contracts for the city's health coverage. Up for renewal this year are medical, which we currently have Health Net and Kaiser Dental. We have MetLife Standard for life insurance and AD&amp;D, along with long-term disability. Our benefit broker went out to bid, out to market, and we received a few quotes. But after meeting with our benefits committee and reviewing all of our different options, the committee recommends that we keep Health Net and Kaiser for our medical. We've tried to stay within the budgeted amount for this year. With that in mind, we're requesting or recommending that Kaiser Plan change from, well, actually to a $10 copayment for their office visit and for their prescriptions. They're currently, the visit is $5 and the prescription is $7. So that would be a little bit of an increase that our employees would absorb. Let's see, there's no change recommended for any other plans up for renewal. MetLife has given us a two-year rate pass, which means that our rates will stay the same as they are now and will not be reviewed again until December 2010. And both the city's life insurance and LTD costs came into reduction. Life insurance went down 10%, LTD by 12%. And again, those rates are good until December of 2010. So if you have any questions, I can try to address them.
I was a little shocked. I was reading this and I was a little surprised. The GPOA, our officers out on the street, their life insurance is $15,000. Is that correct?
Yes, the council members and the GPOA are at $15,000.
Now, everybody else in the city is $25,000 or more, correct?
Right. GPSU was $15,000 until their contract, I think it was last year.
Right.
And they negotiated to increase it to $25,000.
Because the GPOA, right now, they're still $15,000.
Right.
Their contract isn't up for another two years. The reason this caught my eye is...
Well, their contract expires December 2009.
Okay, thank you. So I guess why this caught my eye is $15,000 seems very low. Most people who have life insurance, especially with their employers, usually at least one year their annual salary or so. And I was just a little bit surprised because this is a, even though you can look at it as a benefit, it's a benefit that goes to the family. It isn't something they get. It's a one-time expense, but $15,000 for burial seems very minimal considering the risk that they take. Jason, what would be the cost if we wanted to bring them up to the same level that the rest of the city employees are? What would be the cost to us?
Paula, do you have the exact number?
Not off the top of my head. I think it's under $1,000 per year.
Under $1,000. Well, then I'm hoping, you know, with a little more discussion, but in my eyes, especially these individuals who, you know, who are out there putting their necks out on the line every day for us. And it's not a benefit, like I'm saying, it's nothing that they themselves would get, but it would be for their family should anything happen to them. And I'd like to bring them and at least see them at the same level everybody else is. If, you know, the rest of the council agrees, I'd be interested in hearing their views on it.
When you say everybody else, we have three, four different levels, six different levels of...
Well, you're right. Thank you, Tim. I'm sorry. I'd like to bring them up to the $25,000 level. It is not the top end. It is the bottom end. So I'd like to at least bring them up to the $25,000 level. I apologize.
I think that's the least we can do for the police officers in the field.
It's under $1,000 a month. I don't think it's, you know, for the benefit, I... It's under $1,000 a month, I don't think it's, you know, for the benefit, I think it's well worth its cost.
What would the cost savings be Paula, if we drop the council members' life insurance policy?
That's a good question, I don't know right off the top of my head. Are you wondering if it would be about?
Break even, pretty close.
It would be probably quite a bit less because there are only, it goes by each person and there are only six or five of you and there are, you know, what, 42 of them or 37?
But we'd be eliminating policies altogether rather than just bumping them up, so. I know when I went from like $150,000 of coverage to $200,000, it was a small, I mean, $10, you know, of a $60 policy, so, pretty insignificant.
Yeah, it, it probably wouldn't, I mean, I think we pay like $3 a month per council member, so that would be a $200 saving, so that would be a little bit, you know, of a break.
This is something the council wants to move forward with. I would, I'd recommend that we eliminate our own lifetime medical, lifetime, uh, life insurance policy.
It's not lifetime, it's only, it's only when we serve.
Wish it was.
Our, our life insurance policies.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that because I have $500,000 on myself if I, if I die. It's just.
You're better than a lotto ticket.
Yeah, I know. It's just, council members are periodically getting killed throughout this country by some strange people. So if I got killed by a citizen, I think I'd want my wife to receive something.
As a result of your efforts.
Yes.
No, I could see that, I, I wouldn't argue that.
And I ha, I have a large coverage, so mainly for you guys, it's not for me.
I mean, my opinion is that it's not going to be that big of a savings if we kept the council members on, but I could give you the exact dollar amounts if you want, but it's not.
Yeah, I'd like to see the exact dollar amounts. Are you sure it's just $3 a council member?
I'm pretty sure.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, I guess it'd be different, but I was just envisioning that costs a little more than that per council member.
I do have that information, I just don't have, I'm going to have it back in my office if you want me to.
But your council is saying approximately $3.
Yes, because I did look at that earlier today.
Okay.
Either way, we need to raise the police officers.
Oh absolutely. Barbara?
No comment.
Darrell?
I'm fine with the officers and when their contract comes up, I'm sure they would appreciate that.
I agree, so we're just talking about the police officers, we're not talking about.
The GPOA.
Right, it's all GPOA.
Just GPOA.
So are the council members linked to the GPOA in that? Or they, the council members would stay at $15,000?
The council members can stay at the $15,000, you're not linked together with them.
Okay, so I can make a motion that we accept the health benefits renewal for 2008 and '09 with the exception of increasing the life insurance for the GPOA to $25,000.
Do we have a second?
Okay, can I just get a clarification?
Go ahead.
So are you saying you want that immediately or is that something that we will go into with negotiations?
Immediately, because their negotiation is.
With this contract, we will change that to $25,000 for GPOA.
Okay.
Correct, okay.
This contract right here.
I'm, yeah, you're right, with our benefits carrier contract right now.
Exactly right.
Okay, and then do you want me to bring back the council cost just for your information?
Just for FYI.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
Do we have someone that would like to speak, Mr. Gaethl?
First off, you know I'm running as a candidate for city council. I'd like to just clarify that I've already announced that I wouldn't take any benefits, so this, I have no horse in this race. I was going through the dental plan though and I noticed that the price, the, the coverage of $1,500 versus $2,000 was a minimal increase. I don't know how many of you have been to the dentist recently, but my wife just went to have a filling removed, that, you know, old fillings, you get older, you're all young still, just wait. And when they get in there, they, oops, root canal and a crown. It's $2,000 bucks for a canal and a crown. I just had two crowns replaced, $953 bucks a crown with prep. And that was under, actually a Delta Dental Plan. It was covered under a plan where the dentist cuts his rates for Delta Dental and that's what my bill was. So his standard rate's like $1,100 a crown. $1,500 isn't going to get you much. When, I'm sure when his policy was instituted, I'm sure that $1,500 goes back.
No, actually, we just changed it to $1,500 about a, a year or two years ago when we monitor it and we see how many of our employees and dependents reached that $1,500 amount and it wasn't very much this year. We have been watching that and we haven't had, there have been a couple that have gone over, but not many.
It's, it's, it's a nice benefit and with the cost of, every time I go in the dentist's office, the price increases to the point where, you know, when I, when my company started out, they gave us $1,000. I could get half my mouth worked on. Now I can barely sit in a chair for $1,000. So you might want to think, I think the price was $2 bucks a month, so it was really negligible. So you might want to look at that.
Yeah, to tell you the truth, we've had some experience with my labor union with MetLife. We used to have them as a, as a carrier. Didn't get very good service out of MetLife, so we switched to Delta Dental. Kind of talked with Paula about this in the past. I was really hoping that Delta Dental would come in with a lower bid this time, but it was a pretty significant increase, so unfortunately, we're going to have to stick with MetLife.
One thing you just said makes me wonder. If an employee, let's just say they've spent the first $1,000 on their family and now someone needs a crown at whatever we just heard, $900, I think I typically seen him at like $850, they pay half of the crown, right? Basically. So all I'm wondering is, as people approach that limit and now they need to do another $850 bucks, I wonder if they're perhaps not using it because they have so little left that they're going to pay $700 of the crown or something. I mean, I hadn't thought about it until you just made the comment. You said that not that many people hit the limit.
Right, that's why we thought there might be a big increase from the $1,000 to the $1,500 because you're right, $1,000 is going to not give you a lot. So we thought, well, maybe we would see a lot more people rising to the $1,500 and we really haven't.
Okay.
So we do watch that every year and we get the numbers of, of employees or dependents that reach that.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, approve 5-0. Next item, under the city manager's office, is the capital improvement program project update. This time I'll turn it over to our Assistant City Manager, Jason Bearman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Staff has prepared an update. Back in, in June of this year, the council adopted a new capital improvement program, which is a five-year plan and beyond for the capital infrastructure needs of the community as well as how to finance those. In the current fiscal year, there are 47 projects, from parks and rec projects to transportation, water, wastewater, drainage, equipment and so forth. What you have in front of you is a report by category, general improvements, either one, each of the ones that I just mentioned. It has a general project name, description, and then a timeline, estimated completion date, timeline as far as what's been completed to date, status of the project. It's really an FYI for the council and the community, so you're aware of the status and the update and what's happening in each of these important projects that are going on around the community. And these are all projects that are fully funded in the current year budget. All projects that are in some phase of, of design or development with, with staff. Most of the projects are managed by the Public Works Department. I'm not going to go through each project, but I just wanted to let the council and the community be aware that this is available and answer any questions that you might have. That's it, I'll entertain any questions from the council.
Comments by council, Vice Mayor Haynes?
I'm okay with it.
Councilwoman Payne?
No comments.
All right, do we have a motion?
Aye, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion, we accept the capital improvement program project update submitted by, by management.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye, approve 5-0. That takes us to the Public Works Department. Item three, under the regular calendar, is the wastewater treatment plant upgrade citizen oversight committee. This time I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director, Greg Holliday.
Good evening again. In March of 2007, the council approved the committee charter for the wastewater treatment plant oversight committee. That defined the overall role, mission and scope of authority for the committee. Per this original charter, the purview of the committee was limited to the current project upgrade of wastewater treatment plant in accordance with our NPDES permit. Recently, the committee requested that council revise the committee charter to include review of both utility rate study and the water media implementation program currently being developed by Public Works Department. This was brought to you at your last council meeting. As directed by council, we went back and took a look at the charter and have revised, revised charter. We basically added the rate study and the water implementation plan to their purview as well as the associated funds, the scope, so we can provide them with that fiscal data when we meet once a month. It's a relatively simple change. The revised charter is included in your packet with boldface type indicating the changes. Pretty much concludes my report, I would have to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions by council?
None.
I have no questions.
I, I have a comment and you know, I, I didn't support forming the committee to begin with. And, and what has, what we're guessing about to happen is kind of example of what seems to keep happening in government is it just keeps growing. And so again, the original concerns I expressed about the staff time and everything else developed to it. I know, I know it sounds good to have an oversight committee, but as, as tight as we are to just keep expanding it, because after we expand this, why not, you know, what is the next thing for oversight? So I won't, won't be supporting the issue tonight, but I understand some people's interest in having it.
All right, Councilman Roboy?
I don't have any comments other than I think we need to move forward with this.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, that's a motion.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye, approve 4-1. Takes us to item number four, under the regular calendar, that is the transit services contract. And once again, I'll turn the floor over to our Public Works Director, Greg Holliday.
Next item for the council is a recommendation that the county, the council forward a recommendation to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to award a contract for South County Transit Services to Store Transit Systems. Transit services in the city of Galt and South Sacramento area have historically been provided under a city-county transit service agreement or TSA. Sacramento County has historically been the lead agency and they have actually administered the contract with the provider. Since 2000, the Transit Services has been provided under contract with Community Transportation Agency. Prior to CTA, these services were provided through a contract with the concilio. CTA's original contract has been amended seven times and is currently on a month-to-month basis just as time as the county can bring a new contract to their board. In June 2008, county staff issued a request for proposal to 13 transit providers. The proposed contract will begin December 1st, 2008 and will run through June 30th, 2012. Services will generally be provided in accordance with the approved short-range transit plan that council and the county approved here recently. The costs in the new contract are divided into three different areas. One is startup costs, a monthly fixed fee and unit costs estimated per hour of service. Seven firms attended a pre-proposal meeting and five proposals were received. These proposals are reviewed by a committee consisting of six staff members, two from Sacramento County, two transit managers from Secog, myself from the city of Galt and Tiffany Fink, the transit manager from the city of Lodi. We're tied with Lodi for our 5307 funds. So Tiffany said on the panel for us because she has an interest in the selection of the committee relative to processing our grant financing. Interviews with all five of these firms were conducted. All the proposals anticipate leasing space in the Galt Industrial Park. Part of their operation is a maintenance center because the bus park site will be destroyed or leveled as part of the interchange project. They all anticipated offering positions to most, if not all, of the current provider's staff. This team ranked the proposals from one to five, with one being the best in accordance with the following criteria. Technical completeness of the proposal, demonstrated understanding of the transit needs, the financial stability of the firm, the cost proposal, the experience and qualifications, the proposed local team and personal practices. The rankings and estimated total contract cost for the three and a half years are included in your agenda packet. The costs vary from a low of $4.5 million by MV to a high of $6.9 million by CTA. Store Transit System has ranked the top candidate. Their proposed cost for three and a half years is $5.1 million, not the lowest, they were the second lowest. All of these costs do not include fuel. One of the changes we're going to make for the next year is the city of Galt's going to start supplying the fuel and that will come out of our share with the county. This way we save the user's tax and we can also pay a wholesale rate for the gasoline rather than paying on the street retail rate. County staff anticipates forwarding recommendations to the Board of Supervisors on the meeting on October 28th. And they're requesting that the Galt Council formally approve the recommendation of council, excuse me, of staff to forward the contract to Store. There is no direct fiscal impact, but with this recommendation, I will be bringing back a agreement between the county and the city for the next year's share of the transit cost, including the estimated cost of fuel of about a quarter million dollars. The total Transit Services contract cost for the next year estimated about $1.7 million. Under our current 70/30 cost split, our share would be approximately $1.2 million. This is very close to what we have in the current budget for the next two years. It's a little more than the current year, a little less than the, the following year. But I do hope to renegotiate the contract with the county relative to the change from the current fixed route and dollar ride back to a straight dollar ride service. I do have Dan Schuman, the Chief Engineer with the Sacramento County Department of Transportation here tonight, as well as Donald Store, Steve Fernandez and Rosa Garcia with Store Transit. At this point, we'd ask the council, entertain comments from the audience and approve staff recommendation toward a contract to Store Transit.
We have one speaker sheet, Grace Molson.
Grace Molson, current CEO of the transit company, providing transportation services for 28 years in the city of Galt. I looked over the items that were on the staff report and I have some questions. On the rating sheet, based on six persons, I was ranked last by all six members. I find that very hard to believe that I've been here 28 years and I get a last place. As far as what happened, as, as far as dates and that, I felt that I am responsive to the RFP. Dates have been changed by us quite a few times. We are allowed to have a best and final offer. We received communication on September 10th. I've got 10 questions that I needed to answer, along with some sheets that needed to be filled out. I spent my weekend and on Monday doing it. Then I get a email on September 15th from the county of Sacramento stating that the date for the best and final offer is extended to Friday, September 19th, so that gave us three more days. Then on September 18th at 1:42 PM, less than 24 hours, when the BAFO, or best and final offer, or BAFO as the acronym is, that they were withdrawing the best and final offer. Now, I realize the week came in high. We have been doing service here for 28 years. We know what it costs to run the service here. Reading the RFP, there are some enhancements that we put in that could be, could have been taken out had we been able to do a best and final offer. We are currently now on a manual system for our dispatch and scheduling. We put in provisions for automation, which could be taken out. We can still do dispatching manually. We can still move our buses manually. We didn't have to have a state-of-the-art place. We could have scaled down our area. I am requesting that city council require, or at least submit, let us submit a best and final offer. I think that is very unfair at this point for us as the current provider to have this done to us. Staffing, I'd like to know what the proposed vehicle service hour is for Store Transit Systems versus what mine was, along with fixed monthly rate and management profit. Staffing levels, it says summer all. It's kind of important, I have staff, this takes place December 1st as scheduled. My staff would like to know if they're going to be hired. They want to know what their, these are questions that they're asking me. What is my benefit package? Is it going to be like prior years where I have three drivers that came to us that were guaranteed 40 hours a week with benefits? were guaranteed 40 hours a week with benefits? All of a sudden, it was dropped down to 20 hours a week, no benefits? These are single mothers. Where are they going to go? The welfare rolls? These are going to be taxed? These are things that are going to happen to the citizens of here. I'm sure that the management staff will be gone. I've been employed in this town. I've lived here for 28 years. I was employed by the City of Galt for a while, and I have worked in this town and contributed to this town for 48 years, along with a lot of my employees who've been here 15 and 16 years. We're not, we don't hire, my turnover rate is not, basically, you know, my employees' day.
How many of your employees, Grace, have full-time paychecks and full medical coverage?
22 employees have full 40-hour-a-week, or actually based on the route schedule. My full-time employee hours is 32, because some of our schedules that we have and our routes do not require a 40-hour work week. So, we dropped it down by board. My Board of Directors dropped that down to 32, and they have full benefits. I have one part-time employee that has no benefits. He works Saturdays only. Three of my employees are semi-retired, and they are not taking advantage of the benefit package, so that's actually 20 employees. What happens to the 20 employees? Are they going to all go on Medi-Cal? But the state of the state right now and the economy, that is not a good item to do. I find it interesting, the City of Galt also is offering now to fuel at the corporation yard. There's been a lot of talk over the years of doing it. Daryl, when you sat on my board with the concilio, we talked about it. Now, all of a sudden, we're giving it to another agency, or the other agency is recommended, and I was never able to take advantage. That could have been a cost savings for the company for the last 28 years, I mean, to the city for the last 28 years. I am requesting that we go back and do our best and final offer. That's my request with the city. Oh, one other item. On staff report on the very bottom, it states it should be noted that while it's still possible for the board to reject staff's recommendation to award the contract to another firm, such as the incumbent provider, doing so may ultimately be judged as being inconsistent with FTA procurement process rules and could jeopardize our federal transit funding. I need clarification on that statement, please. I'm sure Mr. Halliday might be able to shed some light on that, please.
So, like me to respond?
Yeah, that was my question, too.
Okay, the federal procurement process through FTA is very explicit in the way that they say that you have to go through and rank the proposals in accordance with a proposed scoring methodology. That is what the scoring team did. As Ms. Malsen has indicated, all six scores ranked her proposal going forward, the last, the least desirable, the most cost, least cost-efficient, the least value of the contract. Okay, we're supposed to recommend the best value. This is the way that the FTA prescribes that you go through and you fund it. This is not a lowest-cost contract. We do have discretion within the proposal to look at value, to look at the quality and caliber of service. This is not necessarily a public works project. And so, we have to make judgment calls as to all of the criteria that I previously indicated tonight and put in the agenda report. On the basis of that, CTA is the bottom-ranked category. That is not consistent. The way you do this is you talk with the top-rated firm. If you cannot come to a contract agreement, then you go to the second-top-ranked firm. Then you go to the next one. You would have to go through all five firms, or all six firms, excuse me, five firms, before you got down to CTA. Take an immediate jump to go from staff recommendation for one firm down to the firm ranked last. The FTA folks, in my opinion, would take a very dim view as to whether that would be what their proper selection criteria. Local preference is not something they list as a criteria for selection.
I'm not really asking for local preference. Last, in 2000, when we negotiated our other contract, we were able to get a consultant selection summary. It stated, because there was a toss-up between another provider and us, the point difference was only like 40 points difference, but they rated it a little bit differently. But we did get a consultant selection survey that had reviewer one, reviewer two, three, four, and five, because there were five reviewers, and it listed the items that are here, responsiveness, qualifications, and are great. And we were able to look at this and say, okay, my staffing quality, well, they were the same. Our cost proposal, they were identical. The only difference that I can see was, okay, my responsive was 10 points above, qualifications was 10 points below, experience was equal, staffing quality was equal, work plan was equal, transition plan was equal, references were equal, cost proposal was 100% for the other, and I got 60, and CTA got 60 points. Facilities and services were equal. Our safety training and vehicle maintenance was five points above what the other provider did. And based on that criteria, then we were able to make a good judgment. We were allowed to do a best and final offer. We did it, and the County Board of Supervisors awarded the contract to us against staff's recommendation, which was MV Transportation at the time. Same thing occurred way back in 1990-something when Mayflower was recommended. We went through the same criteria. We did the same best and final offers, and we got the rating sheets. No names were there, so we don't know who rated us and how they rated us. We didn't care. But when I'm looking at this, and it's saying that, you know, technical complete, do the math, six times five is 30. Now, maybe somebody gave me a two, and even doing the math still comes up to 30. I'm requesting that the BAFO, I'd like to know why the BAFO was rescinded at the last hour, after spending five or six days trying to, because we answered their questions. They wanted to know all about my, the TransLink benefits proposal document. That was a separate sheet that I had to list everything. They wanted to do the methodology for the fifth and sixth contract extensions. Apparently, there had been some issues on how my renewals have taken place. It showed variations in the marketing and advertising. We had to address that. Electricity and gas line items seems low compared to other proposals. Right now, our current facility, we don't have any gas there. Everything's all electric. So, all I had to do on was smudge. We did a best guesstimate based on other commercial properties. Corporate overheads in management, yeah. My previous contract was 2%. We bumped it up a little bit. That stands to reason with the cost of living increases and everything else that's been going on. We did a typographical, we did a math error that I'm assuming now we can't correct. We divided the eight-month project by funding by 12 instead of eight, which should have been $65,000 instead of 36. That was just a typographical error. Maintenance subtotal, our buses have been kept in excellent condition ever since we had Paratransit come onboard four years ago. They cover everything. I don't have to buy any parts anymore. We have an onsite mechanic at our facility. If something goes wrong, he's there immediately. I don't have to wait for a tow truck, or, actually, our safety record as far as towing goes has been excellent. We've had no at-fault or fatality accidents. Then they explained, as a startup, we were going to bring a Paratransit employee to help with the operations. We could do without that person if necessary, and these were things that we could have looked at in the best and final offer. And for whatever reason, it was pulled out from under us, and I don't think it's fair. Whether I'm the current provider or anybody else that was sitting here, that is not a fair.
Thank you, Grace. I wanted to ask a few questions to the representatives from Store Transit Systems.
Before we go to Store, I have questions for Greg.
Go ahead.
If we could. Greg, it talks about here being inconsistent with FTA, and we could jeopardize our funding. Has it been that same issue for the last two, three, four contracts, where the board ignored the recommendations? Or is this something new, because now we're connected to Lodi?
My understanding is, the last time the contract was done, 2002, that was potentially issued. I'm not certain when we got the change to the urbanized area in the 5307 funds that occurred shortly before I got here. The funding switched at that point. We got a much larger share of funding. FTA rules are also getting more and more stringent. I do believe it was possible that they could have taken exception to that process at that point.
When did we join with Lodi? Wasn't it just a few years ago?
I believe it was 2001, 2000.
2001. I think it was after that, because I didn't come on the council till 2002.
Unfortunately, I don't have that date. I don't have that date here. I know it was 2002, the latest 2003, because I was the City of Stockton, and I was involved with it at that point. From reading the, it's kind of a judgment call, and what Lodi, who is our, the grantee, we've attempted to become our own grantee, the FTA will not let us do that. We have to work with the City of Lodi as a combined urbanized area. They have indicated that, suggest that we use caution in regards to this. Secog staff has also confirmed their, a recommendation that to go from a firm that is last-ranked by everybody to all of a sudden bypass everybody else would not be appropriate. If we, if there's problems found and faults found with all the contract providers above them, and we get down to we can't negotiate a contract that we think is favorable, or the county can't, excuse me, county cannot, then they would go through the process and eliminate the firms ranked one, two, three, four. Then they would finally get down to the last-ranked consultant or provider to recommend a contract. Based upon the costs that are there, we don't believe that's fiscally a very smart thing to do. I think there, none of the providers is perfect, but we picked those that we thought were best. In terms of the scoring, we scored the proposals two different ways. The first was a straight point based upon all the different characteristics that we talked about, total of 600 points. Of those, the top score was Store at 531, second was MV at 527, then there was first at 491, private at 481, and CTA down at 394, so it would be below 400. Within, so just on total points, they were also ranked lowest. We then looked at, in order to make it a little more consistent and try to even out my yardstick versus somebody else, as we said, okay, who was ranked number one, number two? Because if there was a single firm that was one, maybe a two consistently across, they might be a better selection than somebody who was constantly up and down across the board. So, in that case, everybody's top pick got one point. So, a perfect score, if everybody had the same top, which they didn't, that best score would be five points. CTA was everybody's worst pick at six points. That's how they got the total of 30. So, no matter which of the two ways you looked at it, one was a straight point, head up, the other was a kind of an average comparison, okay? Regardless of how I ranked them, my top score got a point. We ended up with Store being the same top selected in the recommendation both ways. That's how we arrived at the different score. So, it's not just a matter of the 30 points. Both ways you looked at it, you came up with the same recommendation.
How did you justify your points? I mean, were there comments, or if you wrote up a report on your rating, would it be something that we could look at and?
The following award of the contract, and Ms. Malsen knows about this, the further proposal, all the proposals, the comments, everything is confidential until the word of the contract, after which time they will in fact become public documents. There, the scores were set with criteria. Each one had a certain point and value. Technical, 20%. Financial, 30%. Organizational, 50%. It was left up to each individual ranker, or proposer, or scheduler to look at how I want to split, because some of those had multiple parts. And they didn't say, okay, these should be even, if you had two parts, each one, for example, would be 10 and 10. It could have been 5 and 15. It was left up to each individual person who was scoring to decide what criteria they felt was most important. I think majority of people, for simplicity, split it 50/50, and if it was a two-part question. Some people may have thought cost was a little more important than somebody else. That's why I don't think you can go with a straight point, total point, whoever gets the highest points wins. Going back to that top-ranked person for each of the scores, that's the better way to do it. That's why we double-checked ourselves, and they came out on the top both ways.
Greg, the scoring process, the way you've done it this time, is it any different than the way you've done it in the past?
No, it's 100% consistent with the typical way that I, in almost every agency that I know of, ranks some type of proposal this way, when you're a consultant as opposed to a project bid. Project bid is easy, it's lowest cost. When you have a qualification-based or quality-based value selection, the same process we use when we just awarded contracts to West Jost for the treatment plant design, to Corallo for the master plan. We went through the same scoring criteria. Each individual rater ranked them with a point value, and then each one then had their ranking, one, two, however many we had, exactly the same way.
I want to make comments for this, because I'm on the board.
Sure.
Al Baldwin, a board member with Grace for many years. I was with June Gilmore when she was on it. I want to tell you that when June left, Grace came in, and she picked it up, and she did one heck of a job. When we went to Sacramento to see if we could get our contract renewed, we had the city behind us. We had people from the city that spoke. We had nothing this time. In fact, I think it's probably been somewhat negative. We've not had good communications with the city. Not one person has come to a board meeting from the city that I know of, unless I missed one, which I doubt, but I could have missed one or two, and they could have showed up then, but we didn't have, no one said they showed up, so it's not in our minutes. I'm going to tell you that June, I mean, Grace has done an excellent job working under the conditions she has worked. It's in a warehouse. The city bought it, which was good, but it's been infested for years. Toilets that sometimes if you sat on it, it fell over. The walls are coming apart in areas. Working in the shop is probably the cleanest part of the whole place. We have a mechanic that's really good. But even there, there's a lot of conditions that need fixing. The office, if you had to work in an office of the state, or you had to work in an office in the city here, you would quit your job if you looked at her office and you looked at the working conditions that these employees have been working in for years. I just want to tell you that Grace has done a marvelous job in what she's had to work with. The city has not been behind us all the way, in my opinion. And I understand this is a done deal with Store, and I have no problems with Store. They're a fine-up, wonderful company. But I wanted to let you know, before this all goes down, that Grace has done a one heck of a job, especially under the conditions she's been under and the pressures she's been under, not only some from the city, but from the county. She's done an excellent job. Now, in saying that, since I'm feeling it's a done deal with Store, I have talked to Store tonight, first time I've talked to them, first time we've met them. And they sound like a very nice group, very nice company. They're going to take care of the employees. That was my first question to them, that what's going to happen to our employees? And they claim that they will give them everything they can, they will interview them, they will be fair, they will, their policy is to use the people from the area, which I'm all for, medical and wages. They will be moving to another location that's probably going to be a lot cleaner, probably in the industrial park. I don't know if Greg mentioned that, but that would probably be where they would go. I don't know if they can buy property, but that's the first place that they're going to go. They won't be in this building. You say you're going to tear it down, that's the best thing you can do with that building. Yeah, the parking is awful. It's conditions you would not work under. It's conditions you would not work under, under any circumstances, and take what Grace and the crew has taken. I'm serious, you should look at it and see. She has done a great job working with those conditions, and I feel she's done an extremely good job, especially under the pressures that she's had. And I just wanted to come up and mention that to you and let you know that we've done our best in Galt for a lot of years. And we're small in Galt, we have a small transit company in Galt, and we've done the best we could with what we had. And it's not easy. Sure, a bigger organization can come in and they'll do what they can, and they'll probably do a better job, maybe, because they're a little bigger and they're, they have different things to work with. So I just wanted to come up here and give my two cents.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you. Could we have the representatives from STORE step up? Could you just identify yourself for the represent?
Good evening, members of council. My name is Donald Storer. I'm president and CEO of STORE Transit Systems. And I'd like, if I could, to give you a real short presentation about our company, so you can get to know about us a little bit before I answer your questions. Would that be possible? Yes. First of all, we are a valley-based, Central Valley-based company. We've been in business for 56 years. We started in 1952. We're based in Stanislaus and San Joaquin Counties. We operate in several other areas, but we're based there, that's our corporate area. We operate 350 buses approximately, and we employ approximately 520 employees in the Central Valley. What we're known for, we're known for our quality of services. We're known for our safety. In 2007, our company was chosen as Safety Leader of the Year by the United Bus Association. One bus company in the United States has given this award. We were given that award in 2007. It's a very prestigious award. Our workforce is very quality, and we're known for our community-based efforts. We're part of the community. Once we contract with the community, we know people by names. That's what I was really encouraged tonight about how you interact with the community. That's how we do business. When we evaluated this bid, the first thing we saw, that we saw that a driver's pay was very, we felt was very low. We did an evaluation before we bid on any contract, and we wanted to see where the weaknesses and where we can improve services. So we felt that the existing driver's pay was extremely low. We also noted that there was extreme turnover. She noted that there wasn't, but we felt that, based on the records that we were provided, about half the employees were been with the company for less than three years. So we consider that to be a pretty good, high turnover rate. We also thought that it was a manual dispatch system. Reservations are manually provided. In this day and age, we thought that was behind, you know, we're, you know, we think we could improve in that area. So here's what our approach was. Our approach was to give a bid that we offer all existing employees employment opportunities with our company. We'd interview them, we'd check their backgrounds, we'd check their driving records. If they fit our high standards, we'd offer them employment. Second of all, we would honor all seniority with, of the existing employees. In other words, if an employee has worked for the agency for five years, they'd be five years of seniority with us. So there would be no loss of seniority. So anytime there's a takeover, you know, you always worry you'll have to start all over again. But that would not be the case with our company, because we'd honor their seniority. The current pay for drivers, right now, the average of their 14, 15 drivers is $991 an hour. That's very low. That's about $20,000 a year for full-time employment. Those are the people that are responsible for safety. They're putting the rubber, tires, you know, rubber on the pavement. They're meeting, greeting the customers. We think they're underpaid. Those same employees, the same group of employees, if they came to work for us on December 1st, their average pay would be $1362 an hour. That's a 37% increase over what we're getting paid right now. We don't think that's an overpayment. We think that's what they deserve. This is the exact wage scale and benefit scale that we pay our other employees in the valley. These employees would also get 11 paid holidays per year, and full-time employees that have been with the company for five years and more would get 20 PTO days a year. It's not overpayment, it's what's fair. As an example, they have one driver that's been with the current agency for six years, and that driver makes $1033 an hour. That same employee, as of December 1st, will go to $1465 per hour with the benefits. We also, in our bid, we proposed, provided, we proposed a computerized dispatch and reservation system, state-of-the-art. We use it in all our operations. It's more efficient, we can pick up more passengers, we can schedule better, it's just a better way of doing business. We're a professional transportation company who knows how to run a professional operation. We are a half a million dollars a year under the current provider, yet we're going to provide more. So I think we're, you, if you call our references, you'll find out that we are very reputable, and in 56 years, our company has never lost a contract. Once we've been awarded a contract, we've never lost one. Because of the high-level service, we give fair pricing, we're community-based, and we fit in with the community. We have a saying that, and I'm not a professional, we have a saying that we're big enough to serve our customers, yet we're small enough to know their names. And that's kind of our motto. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Storer, on the benefits for the employees, will they be comparable to what's being offered now?
Here's the problem. When we evaluated the benefits, they're all over the board. There are several employees that have no benefits. There's a few that have up to $1,515 a month, $50 a month in benefits. There's no--
Standard.
Standard. I mean, it's impossible to look at it and say, okay, the average employee gets this, because it's all over the place. So we're going to, we budgeted $500 a month for employees per, for benefits. Each employee, there's a cap, and that cap goes up each year for benefits. Anything over that, they're responsible to contribute to the plan, and it's based on whatever plan they choose. We also offer Health Net and Kaiser for our medical services. But with them, with them making 37% more money, to have those funds available to fund that medical, just if it's more fair-based than a few people getting the benefits and all the people getting low pay. So I think it's a fair approach to do it. We're higher in benefits than Lodi, because we think that we just need to be in that range. Any other questions?
I have a question for you.
Hmm?
You didn't mention what cities you operate under, you operate in now.
Yes, we operate in Stanislaus and San Joaquin Counties. We operate dial ride services for seven communities, seven cities, Bedestow, Series, Patterson, Newman, Waterford, Oakdale, Riverbank.
Do you guys offer any commuter services, or just dial ride?
Actually, we're a very diversified company. We operate school buses, tour buses, the transit, both paratransit, dial ride. We also operate a full tour company. We bring international travelers in from all, mainly from Europe and take them throughout the western states, 11 western states for travel. So very diversified. If we're awarded this contract, there's a very good likelihood that we would move some of our service up to this area, which would create some jobs, and dip into that Sacramento market for our tour bus business.
When you say this area, would you be looking at Galt?
Galt. So we're looking at, in fact, we have visits tomorrow at five sites at the Galt Industrial Park.
How many jobs do you think that might bring?
I don't know. It depends on if we get the right, Sacramento market's been very appealing to us as far as the tour bus market. And this would get us a notch close enough to Sacramento that we could tap into that market. And you could conceivably, you know, I'm not going to say a job, I mean, a number of jobs, but typically, what we do is we go into an area, and like in San Joaquin County, we employ about 100 and, probably 110 employees there now, somewhere in that range. But we started off with about 60, so we've grown about 40 there, San Joaquin County.
Back to commuter question. It's something that I've been asking about for a while. I get a lot of calls from residents about commuting to Stockton, commuting to Sacramento. I commute to Sacramento. I take E-Trans periodically, and a lot of people from Galt that ride ask about commuter buses. Is that anything in the plans for your company for Galt if you win this contract?
Good question. As we speak, we have an application before the PUC, we're proposing one, to provide commuter services from Stanislaus and San Joaquin Counties into all Bay Area locations. We would also could look at that same application process for this area. It's a new area to us. It's an area where the costs are, it's very cost, the fares don't pay for the service cost. You have to have some type of subsidy in order to make it work. But we're exploring the different opportunities through CARB and where we can get some funding to make that work. So we would look, take a look at something like that.
Is that something, Greg, that the city would work with them on if they won this contract?
Definitely. The establishment of a commuter service is part of the Short Range Transit Plan, but not in the current year. Their services are proposed in accordance with the objectives that set forth in the approved Short Range Transit Plan. I am still continuing to work with Lodi and San Joaquin Regional Transit relative toward trying to coordinate with their buses to get them to stop here for commuter service into Sacramento.
One last thing. As far as the best and final, our first bid is our best and final. We give you our best shot the first round. We don't go back and try to make adjustments, and that's the way we do business. If you want a bid from us, we're going to give you our best shot the first time around. And so if there was a best and final, our price, and I'll make it public, it's not going to change, and we got a best and final, it's out there.
What are your customer rates? How would they compare to what we are charging now?
With the fares? The fares are set by the county or the cities, the different entities. We have no, that's not part of our, we're just operations. We come in and we run the system, and the entities, the governmental entities, set the fares so that they meet the fare box ratios. But through efficient operations, we can help raise those fare box ratios, which are very important for funding.
Could you explain that a little further? In other words, you're not, the fares aren't paying for your operations?
No, roughly, in the transit industry in the United States, roughly fares pay, must pay for, in California, roughly 10% of the cost of the operation.
Who pays the rest?
Through the federal government, and I don't know the funding sources in this area, but in our areas, it's California and the federal government.
Are you a, are you a for-profit company?
Yes, we are.
As opposed to their company is nonprofit, I believe?
Well, we don't always make a profit, I'll tell you that, but our goal is to make a profit. But we're professional transportation providers, and we believe that how, why we're a half a million dollars less than the current provider is because we're more efficient. We can operate efficiently, because this is all we do. We've done it for 56 years, and we know how to run a transportation system. We know how to run it right, and we're not fat, we're not lean, we run it right.
Have you done any customer surveys? Are your customers satisfied with your service?
Every year, we certify, we send out surveys, which we provided copies in our proposal that to all our customers, we sample and survey to find out how we do service-wise. So what areas that we can improve, we always look for ways to improve. So every one of our contracts, we do customer surveys.
They talked about unit cost per estimated service hour of bus operation time. Do you know what your figures would be for that?
Yeah, the unit pricing per hour is, for the first year, was $31, second year, $31.48, third year, $32.68, and fourth year, $33.89.
How does that compare with SCT Link? Is that on your spreadsheet?
I'll show you back, I'll see if I can find it. For CTA, the first year was $37.74, $39.04, $39.75, and $40.16.
You said that the hourly rate, the $13.62, that's something that all of your employees are making right now?
That figure wasn't, if I took all the existing employees right now, who are averaging $991 per hour pay, those same employees would average $13.65 with us. Now, our pay starts at $11.90 an hour and goes up to 15, 15.24 per hour. That's our wage scale. And once again, each employee has a seniority, they would go on our seniority at that same level.
I'm looking at your website. There's employment opportunities listed. The Medical Dental Vision 401K, that's the $500 that you talked about already.
401K is separate. 401K is a separate issue, or separate benefit.
That's not part of the proposal?
It is. Yeah. Basically, what we do is we match 20% of all employees' contributions on our 401K, and we also have a profit sharing that we distribute amongst them.
Okay. Any other questions, counsel? Daryl?
You did mention fare box recovery. About what are you running in your other operations? Where that applies?
You know, once again, as an operator, the contractor, we really don't get too much involved in the fares and the ratios, because that's, we don't, we can't control how much we charge for the fares, though the ratios, we don't know what the cost for the staffs and the support staffs within the governmental agencies. So I can't really tell you, I all know that we are above all of them, all the, you know, the minimum mandated. In fact, our fixed routes, we're up in the 20s. So we're very efficient.
What would your intentions be if you awarded the contract as far as, other than drivers at the current firm, as far as any management people, dispatchers, those type of things?
We would take a look at every, all employees. Everybody would have an opportunity to fill out an application, and we'd give those people the first shot. But once again, we want to make sure that they meet our standards. And I'll give you an example. We just took a contract over in Riverbank and Oakdale. We were given seven days to take over a contract, and once we interviewed, looked at these applications, we found that out of the 15 drivers, only three of them are legally licensed to drive a vehicle. So, yeah, and I don't think that's the case here. I think that you have a good work first, you have a dedicated person that's been here for a long time, and we're not going to come in here and disrupt that unity that you have with your customers and with these employees. We're just going to give them what we feel is a better package, especially in pay, and support in our safety and our trainers. And we just have a lot of support that goes into transportation system. It's more than just, you know, it's a bundle of different people. And we're one phone call away, we're one email away, we know people by their first names. There's no corporate veil you have to pierce to talk to somebody. If there's a problem, we get it solved.
And how long did you say you'd been in business?
56 years.
56 years?
Would you consider a Saturday run, like into Sacramento or something? I've heard some of the citizens say they wish that they, that we had a Saturday weekend run.
We would consider any services that you felt there was a need for. It's, you know, that's the American way, is to provide the services needed.
Very good. Very impressive presentation. You answered the questions quite well. I appreciate that from my perspective.
Any other questions for Mr. Storer?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other general comments by counsel before we move forward?
I did want to get some clarity, and I have a feeling when I was on vacation at the last meeting, perhaps you've heard something I haven't. I haven't heard an explanation about the best and final.
The proposal included the possibility of a best and final offer, and it was the intent originally to ask the parties for that. This was done-- This was done right at the Labor Day weekend, and the first, best and final, the first date was given, I think right after, and I don't remember the exact dates, but it was either right before or right after Labor Day. I think there was a three-day window, and particularly Secog staff in the county thought it was better to extend that and give it a little more time. We are in sort of a time crunch, wanna get the proposal out, December first is looming. Subsequent to that, as part of the information that was sent back to the parties, there was information provided that we felt crossed the line relative to the information that was provided about one bid versus another bid. And in conjunction with our counsel, county counsel, with Lodi, Secog, and the county, we agreed that the best option to move forward was to not allow a best and final, but to rank all the proposers on the basis of their proposal and the interviews that we had, without any additional information that came after that fact. The best and final was not guaranteed through the process. Some agencies use them, some is not, it wasn't the intent going into that. But the general consensus of all the parties involved, as far as from the administrative side, not necessarily the proposers, was it was better to stop where we were, and not actually solicit the best and final offer as a general whole, but to do that through the negotiations with the top-ranked firm.
Can I ask Grace Maltz to come back up and ask her something? First off, you know how much respect I have for you and your crew, and June before you and everyone else, all the work you've done.
Thank you.
There isn't a way to thank you enough, and during the time I was on your board and acted as treasurer, I'm very aware of how much you folks gave of your personal lives, not just your professional lives, and how much of your heart was in that business, that building, every vehicle, every employee, your employee parties, and everything else. So, I hope there's no doubt in your mind how I feel about the organization. And my question, and if you can help me, if the majority, because there's no way to ask them to hire every employee, but if it worked out that the majority of your employees went to this firm if they were given a position, and based on what you know of this company and all, I know how much you would hate to lose this contract, and quite frankly, how much I'd hate to see what used to be SCT Link or any other name that the organization's operated under. What are your thoughts, if that all came true? Well, I know that's a tough question, but I mean, based on what you know, I very much appreciate your concern for your employees, and that's why I say, if a majority of them ended up with this firm, because it's important to the people in our community. I mean, they say, you know, they provide service and know people's names. I mean, we know people's names, we know their dogs' names, we know their, you know, where they shop, and I mean, the relationship you folks have with your customers is hard to imagine anyone could exceed or even match. But if the majority of your employees found employment and continued on in this industry, if they chose to, do you have, do you have other things besides that that you don't think would be the same, or?
Well, one of my concerns, just briefly what this gentleman said, was about the benefit package. Our personnel policy plays, pays a hundred percent plus one, because we have a lower wage base. We got the contract the last go-around, because Ilah Collins, I remember she was sitting there saying, "I'd rather have the employee, employer pay for benefits than to be on the county rolls." So, this offering the five hundred dollar cap, when some of my employees, because they have their families in there, are a thousand dollars, yes, they might pay them thirteen dollars an hour, but they're paying five hundred dollars per month, if I did the math right, if I understood what he was saying. That's five hundred dollars a month, so their net might be less than what they're taking home now. I think that is something that Store needs to look at. As far as my drivers and staff, they're concerned, they're a little apprehensive. We know a lot of our senior citizens by name. I, we have some that are special-issue individuals that we've tried to work with. Their families, when they have dementia, don't know who they are, what they are, or where they're even going, finding them wandering around the street. We stop and pick that individual up. If she or he does not have a fare, we ourselves contribute to that fare. These are items that we have brought to the table that maybe other agencies over the years. I mean, we started out as a community transit agency, we went to Trax. People still call up and say, "Is this Trax?", even though we changed our name five, six years ago. And in answer to one of the questions that was asked about the urbanized area, it came to being in two thousand and three, after we were awarded the contract through the county in the year two thousand. So, that's the question. Yeah, but it was two thousand and three. And that's when our fare box jumped from ten percent recovery to twenty percent recovery. And I'm still questioning why they even did. I understand that we needed more funding, don't misunderstand me, but because of that criteria, when you look at my statistics as far as ridership, ridership over the years has not changed. I'm still carrying over a hundred thousand passengers, no matter what route we are doing, fixed routes, dial-a-right, the ninety-nine service, and the Delta. And, yes, we were not offered opportunities to automate. We tried, because we're a nonprofit, we had to be careful with getting capital monies. Sometimes we were denied when we asked. The last go-around, I, when we did our new proposals in two thousand and five, I did vehicle service hour rate increases, and when the county renewed our contracts, I was working at twenty-nine dollars a vehicle service hour in two thousand and eight, when it should have been thirty-three. I had to fight to even get that. And I'm just hoping that Store will offer the same level of service and keep the employees. I'm sure they'll bring in their own management team, so I will probably be saying goodbye, and stay at home and enjoy my granddaughter. You know, it's up to them, I will go through the interview process if they so choose to do it. A lot of my drivers have said that they would go through the interview process, but they're concerned, and they're scared.
Sure.
You know?
No, I know.
And that's basically my concerns, is that they carry on and keep on what we have built up the last twenty-eight years in this community. We've been here a long time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Grace.
Thank you.
Can I ask the staff, or whomever, what will become if this contract goes to Store? Will it become the existing vehicles?
The existing vehicles will be transferred to Store's care. We will continue to provide the vehicles for the provider.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments by counsel, questions?
I have no comments, no more comments, really.
We have a motion.
I make a motion to the City Council adopt the resolution recommending that the Sacramento Board of Supervisors award the contract for South County Transit Services to Store Transit Systems.
I'll second the motion.
Call for the vote.
Aye.
I'm gonna have to vote no, I just think of how we've lost control of our fire department, and I just don't want to see us go through that again.
I was with them at the last supervisors' meeting to fight for keeping it, and, but I've got approved tonight's proposal, the cost differentials, too great to ignore for the citizens. But in the vote I'm making, I sure hope Store does everything they can to retain all the employees that you feel meet your criteria, because if you have people with more heart than these employees, I'd like to meet them, these people have, you just can't imagine what they've done, and as Al said, what they've done without, so I will support tonight's motion.
Aye.
Aye. Approved four to one.
At this time, we'll adjourn to the redevelopment agency. Liz, would you please conduct the roll call?
Board members Haynes?
Here.
Haynes?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Roboy?
Here.
Meredith?
Here.
Consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Approved five zero. At this time, we'll adjourn and reconvene to the Galt City Council, City Clerk's report.
Just a quick note, everybody has a, I'm doing a voter registration drive. I've been to the high school for a couple days. You guys have a piggy bank in front of you, that's part of the drive. We also have pencils, which I think all the council overs have as well. So, take some with you, if you can pass them out. I'd love to get them out there. Just a couple reminders, the City Council Youth Committee meeting has already happened. The Parks and Rec Commission's special meeting is at five-thirty in the council chambers on October eighth.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow. On October ninth, Planning Commission meeting, six-thirty in the council chambers. October fourteenth, the Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrade Oversight Committee meeting, six p.m. in the City Hall Community Room. October sixteenth, the Beautification Committee meeting, three-thirty in the City Hall Community Room. October twentieth, the Water Meter Implementation Plan meeting, the Police Community Room at six p.m., which takes us to our next city council meeting on October twenty-first. That's all I have, thank you.
Comments by staff?
If you all make a comment, and then Greg has a couple of comments as well. Some bad news, we had some problems with our live feed tonight. So, I know Mary specifically mentioned that you had somebody that was supposed to be watching it. Unfortunately, that person didn't get the answer, so you have to follow up, follow up with him and give him the news.
I think it was feeding that there was just a huge time delay, wasn't that?
Well, it cut off, it was feeding early on, and then it totally gave up pretty early on in the meeting. And the error message we got said that there was a problem on the server end, on the Bay Area side. So, we'll have to do some troubleshooting and figure out what happened, but there will be, the feed itself will be on the website tomorrow, so if people want to go back and review it, it'll be there. That didn't get interrupted, it's just the live feed that got interrupted. So, the archived meeting will be there, if somebody wants to go in tomorrow and look at the individual portion of the meeting, they will still be able to do that.
Usually, it takes a day, so if it's not there tomorrow, it'll probably be there on Thursday.
Right.
Usually takes a day to get it.
And Greg had some comments.
Liz already mentioned the Water Meter Implementation meeting on the twentieth, but I want to let counsel know that I've been discussing with the city manager, we're continuing to have theft of streetlight wire. We've been hit six times now, total cost to date about fifteen thousand dollars to replace the wire. Working with the police department, we're taking steps to make it more difficult to steal the wire, as well as to catch those that are responsible for it. But the city manager's authorized, rewarded up to a thousand dollars for information leading to the arrest and conviction of those responsible for theft of wire within Galt. And we're working with the paper to get the word out tomorrow, so hopefully we'll find out who's doing this and make it stop.
All right, comments by counsel, Vice Mayor Haynes?
Yes. Anybody out there, tomorrow, they're going to be, the Chamber of Commerce is gonna be hosting the Meet the Candidates night. This is a good time to get a chance to find out who's running for the city and what their positions are on the issues. So, I would highly recommend anybody going, everybody going in fact, so, and that's all I have.
Counselwoman Payne?
It's easy for you to say, you don't have to sit up there and answer the questions.
You got that right.
I wanted to share with you that I received a letter from Mona Stevens with the Sacramento Transportation Authority, saying it looks like we will be five to seven percent short on what we had anticipated collecting. And so, we need to look at possibly adjusting our revenue expenditures for that. That's not good news. I attended the Globe Mills grand opening, and this is the same developer that's gonna be building our senior project. It was amazing. They took this mill, and they turned it into this unbelievable apartment complex. It was a little different from my taste, the walls were concrete, just raw concrete, and they left the construction writing on the walls, but it was an interesting conception. But the new part was very nice for the senior apartments, and those were for the more affordable. And I think we're lucky that we have this distinguished person that's gonna be putting something, hopefully, in our hometown. That's it. We already talked about the fence, so I didn't want to go over that again.
Counselman Claire? Counselman Roboy?
I'm gonna pass tonight, since we have to go back to closed session.
Oh, well, if he's gonna pass, I gotta say something about his own police report. I thought he was gonna touch on it. I just wanna remind people the kind of workload that is on the police department. In the month of August, they handled two-hundred-and-eighty-six cases. I thought Tim was gonna say that.
Okay, under my comments, just briefly, last Thursday, I gave a presentation on my energy proposal to the local government commission, and then over the weekend, I attended a function with Phil Angelides, who was the former Democratic candidate for governor, and Senator Barbara Boxer on the launch of the Apollo Initiative, which is seeking to get private companies to invest in clean renewable energy across the United States. So, I was also reading a comment on the internet a little while ago, that a nineteen-year-old Galt man passed away in a car accident. I've heard that this was a student from Galt High School, they graduated last year, but I don't want to mention the name, because there's no official announcement yet, but our thoughts are definitely with that family. With that, we will adjourn to closed session, and we will reconvene in open session for a report.